I'm not sure if it's open upstairs. Do you want to move it to your line?
I don't know.
He better be here.
Yeah.
That's all I have to say. For the end of the night, I'll want to stay.
No, it's on the agenda. I have time.
Well, you have a good time. I think I see.
Hey, are you still?
I still don't know what's up with you. I'm just, I know.
We're gonna rest.
Yeah, I'm gonna go sit. Thank you. It's not so. Yes, I don't know what part of California it is. But going to California wasn't any better.
Well, California, I don't live there. Those, those pictures are just incredible. I'm gone.
I'm gonna start sending some of these away and then push them back to center. No, I don't know. I think, I think I have. Okey dokey. Thanks. Sure. Oh, I've got the magic sink. I thought I took it. All right. Yep. Um, possible. Probably shed some paper. Or two pieces. Yeah. They need to get rid of that chair. Sorry, I thought I got it. Yep. Um, possible. What do they probably shed some paper? Or two pieces. Yeah. They need to get rid of that chair. So, I mean, I thought I got it. Yep. Either that or we have another one.
Chair's the only fund the planning board ever has.
We love playing new chairs. No, they're gonna be nice tall.
Let's pull this one away.
Yes. I'm the one that's doing the chopping. I'd be happy to go chopping with you.
Should be good. Wheels are not working.
Yeah, absolutely. There he is. Yay. What time is it, Nathan?
You made it. Can't make Luke's committee. Just move over a chair. We can get rid of one. All right, I can do that.
Good idea. So, which part of California were you in? Well, I was in the LA Basin, which is all smoky and hazy. Thank you very much. Yes.
Luke's not coming.
I think you can head Luke's way out. Yes. So, this has been a good day. This is so good.
He was, in my mind, I thought it would sound like a weekend. For me, it was like a weekend, but, um, bananas, like, out there. Yep. Oh, yeah. Yeah. I noticed her car there. Michael signed for Luke too. Exactly. No olives in water. Better too much in your room. You know, the number. I figured that. The weather was cool, but sunny.
Yes.
Get rid of that. Let me just sign Luke's name, so we have a full slot. Where's, where's the hand link? Yeah, four Luke.
Good idea.
It's a fortune. Wow. So, it's unreadable. Yeah.
November 13th, 2018, at seven o'clock, and well, 7:03, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the meeting. Reading through today's agenda, at seven o'clock, we will have community input. At 7:05, the Carlisle 4-H Creators Club presentation. At 7:15, Board of Selectmen discussion of the process and scheduled to review the deer hunting pilot program. At 7:30, Carlisle Energy Task Force Municipal Solar Project vendor selection. At eight o'clock, the Board of Selectmen discussion regarding the housing authority appointments, the Affordable Housing Trust and Authority roles and responsibilities and a path forward. At 8:30, Cemetery Deeds. At 8:35, Joint Board of Selectmen, Board of Health appointments. At 8:45, the Town Administrator Reports. At 8:55, Board of Selectmen Liaison Reports. At 9:05, Approval of Minutes. And at 9:10, we are going to go into executive session, and at 9:30, we expect to adjourn. So, with that, I will start off by opening it up to any public input. So many people here. Yes, please. Oh, I was over here.
Yeah, no, I'm good. Hello, my name is Jeannie Janetzko, and I've been here a number of times since September 25th. I've been trying to get the Stop the Hunt Deer Hunt on the Board of Selectmen and have not been able to. I find that the system doesn't work well because it doesn't tell you how to approach the Board of Selectmen. I went to the Board of Selectmen page on meetings, and what it says is, "All meetings are open to the public, and residents may address any issues or concerns that they have to the Board during the open forum portion of the agenda near the beginning of each meeting." But it doesn't say anything beyond that. It doesn't say who to submit paperwork to. I was assured by the Board that they would consider what I had to say, but I didn't get responses back. When I did get a response that I was going to be put onto the agenda for one of the meetings, it was retracted, and I did not even find out why it was retracted. So, I've worked very hard for six weeks or since September 25th to get onto the Board of Selectmen. So, I, it is, as I said, it is no secret that I'm on the Stop the Deer Hunt agenda here for myself. But what I did is, I said, "Okay, if I'm having trouble getting onto the deer hunt agenda, other people maybe too." So, I wrote a letter, because I didn't even know who really to write the letter to, so I wrote, I said, "I'm gonna blanket the whole Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator and Jen Gibbons," and I wrote, "Dear Nathan, Luke, Carrie, Kate, Al, Tim, and Jen, please return my name, Reed Deer Hunt, to the Board of Selectmen agenda for the next Selectmen's meeting, which I believe is November 13th. Please list all items I have previously submitted since September 25th, including town meeting for deer hunt decision, immediate cessation of the deer hunt, safety and liability issues, and my membership in the deer committee." Because I very much want to be a member of the deer committee. "At the top of the agenda items from my name, please put the deer hunt decision back under town meeting for a vote, as originally determined in the 2015 election." I could not find Luke's name on the list of Selectmen for the town site, so please make sure he receives this email. And then, very importantly, I put, "Finally to all, I could not find any procedure on the Board of Selectmen site on how to get onto the Board of Selectmen agenda for meetings. For the benefit of all Carlileans, this document should be generated and placed onto the BOS site." And so, I, I don't usually get an answer from the Board of Selectmen, but I did, very polite answer from Mr. Goddard, and he wrote, "Dear Ms. Janetzko, the Board of Selectmen's agenda is created by the chairman. Agenda items are only approved by him or her. The November 13th agenda is not yet final and will be posted tomorrow. Chairman Nathan Brown stated previously that he would be placing on the agenda a board discussion of the process by which they will review the pilot deer hunting with input from the deer committee and Conservation Commission." And as you notice, that I'm not included in any of this. So, I wrote to Mr., to Nathan, and I wrote, "Please note what Tim wrote below. It appears that I will not be on the agenda again with my concerns." Please, and I note the word "please." "Please specifically put on the agenda as a separate item for the upcoming BOS meeting, the creation of an official document to be permanently added to the BOS website that formalizes the procedure for a Carlisle, citizen of Carlisle, to get their concerns on the Board of Selectmen agenda. I have been trying since September 25th. This is irrespective of the deer hunt. This has to do with basically citizenship within Carlisle and the right to be heard and the right to have my concerns discussed." And I got an answer from Nathan back. "Jeannie, anyone is welcome to make a statement at community input. However, making a statement is one thing, being heard and responded to is something else, even if they say, 'We reject everything you have to say.'" However, there isn't a quote process unquote that someone can follow to demand inclusion on the BOS agenda. I don't see anywhere where there is a demand being made. It is said that we can make statements. It implies that we will be heard and that we will be responded to. Do I expect that it will be in the affirmative? Not necessarily. But I expect that I will hear something back. I deserve to hear that as a citizen of Carlisle, and I haven't gotten any of those concerns met that I have. And that should be a concern for every citizen within Carlisle, because someday it will not be just me up here. It will be you up here, and you should have your concerns met as well." So, he continued on. He says, "As you probably know, the deer hunting, oh, with that said, I have included deer hunting on our agenda next week, which again does not include me, so that I could be prepared. As you probably know, the deer hunting program is led by the deer committee and managed by the Conservation Commission. All of this at the request of the Board of Selectmen." And then he goes on to say, "When the Board of Selectmen approved hunting, it was for one year, would follow up to the BOS from the deer committee and Conservation Commission after this year's hunt. At this, next week's meeting is my intention to lay out the process and expectations for this follow-up, which will be at a future meeting. It is my expectation that the deer committee will get input from citizens, the Conservation Commission, and hunters to include in their report to the BS, BOS." I think that that is an inadequate response to my request, because if you're getting input from one side at a meeting like this, it should be from both sides, and it hasn't been, because I haven't been diligent and polite and supplying a lot of information to get that, to, to at least be acknowledged and say, "This is what we do." And even if you don't want any of my input, you should be brave enough to say, "At public meeting, we don't want to hear anything you have to say. You have no input." So, that is my input. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me get to.
Hello, my name's Debbie Bentley. I'm the Hildrod, and I'm here on behalf of the Poppy Project. I'm here to request an extension to the display. It's due to come down on Thursday, but I'm asking that it be extended to Sunday, because tomorrow WBZ are coming to film the Poppy Project, and there'll be nothing more annoying than seeing it on television and find out it disappeared. So, so the idea is that we take it down Sunday afternoon, and then I'm asking if we could replant the poppies on the graves of those that served in World War I in the Green Cemetery for a further two weeks, so that people can, in the town, can, as they walk through the cemetery, can see where the graves are and pay their respects to the people. That's my request.
Is there a display of some sort, Debbie?
No, it's really small.
I almost had an accident a couple of times. Look in here, it was beautiful.
So, that was, that's just all I'm requesting, and obviously, I'm sorry, I didn't give you any time, but I didn't.
Is there a way we can put that in Town Administrator's Report?
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Ed Hallam, East Street. I attended the deer committee meeting last, was it, last week? And when I was there, they, they said that the hunt ends on the 24th, and we asked when the stands would be taken down, and they said they're going to give them three Sundays. I think they should come down the next day, the 25th, because there's another portion of the hunting starts with guns shortly after that. I don't like the idea of the stand still being up. Don't like the idea that a hunter could come back and possibly use that stand, whether they're legal or illegal hunters. I think they, there's no reason, I was told that it takes about two hours to put a stand up. It should take less time to put it down. If they're away for Thanksgiving, for some reason, it ends by the, by Thursday is the 23rd. The hunt ends 24th. There's no reason they couldn't take it down before they go away, if they're not gonna be here for Thanksgiving.
Okay. Would you mind coming back up again when we're talking about the deer committee? I will be asking, I will be opening up for public input if anybody wants to talk, but that way we can respond to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Hi, David Klein, Council on Aging, Town of Carlisle. Two quick things. One, I want to publicly thank everybody involved in the, the road race, including the Selectmen for granting us the ability to, to road, run the road race, to the police for protecting all the runners, and, and, and the sun for coming out. Anyway, we had a, a good, good time yesterday morning, a lot of volunteer help from kids from the Carlisle Public Schools, and although our numbers are down from prior years, it's, it was still a very nice event. So, I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that. And secondly, real quick, I, I have a feeling that Tim probably covered this in some way, shape, or form in his Administrator's Report, but I just want to mention that things are going pretty steadily with the Chinaw grant, with the three projects that we're working on. Linda Fantasia may have reported through the, the Board of Health that a public health nurse has been engaged, and she'll be working with both the Board of Health and the Council on Aging to, to, to serve people in Carlisle. So, that's great. The other two committees that were, or advisory groups that we have on, one's on the Community Center. Tim and Jen worked on getting out a request for qualification for vendors. We received three on Friday, and our group met today, and we, we are planning on interviewing two out of the three. And we're, it's on a pretty aggressive schedule, which is one of the reasons I'm mentioning it now, because we're supposed to be choosing one of the three by the 30th. So, I just wanted to kind of give you guys a heads up, so that, you know, maybe we would be able to talk to it for a few minutes at the next meeting, if, if you guys have, have the time.
So, you want to get that on the agenda in case?
The third project is, is, as some of you know, is the transportation, transportation project, and we've had presentations from both Uber and Lyft, and we've had multiple meetings with the committee, which includes membership from the school committee and various other, other stakeholders in Town Hall. And it looks like we're, we're getting closer to, to making a decision on what we want to do with that project and engaging somebody. So, that's moving along too. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Weiss. I'm on Brook Street. I would like to bring it to the Selectmen's attention that Brook Street has a lot of safety concerns that really need attention. I moved onto the street over 20 years ago. It had just been paved. The residents rolled their eyes and joked that they didn't get the road paved again until there were rocks jutting up from the bottom, and the pavement wasn't there. Well, three seasons ago, we had the same situation. We had rocks jutting up. There was no pavement, pretty much, on a lot of the road. About maybe five years after we had moved in, there was a severe storm, and it washed out a good eight inches on either side of the pavement. So, an already narrow road, on a very curvy road, that was dangerous even by the town standards to begin with, was now 16 inches narrower, and it wasn't fixed, it wasn't repaired. Then, when it was paved three years ago, it was not prepared properly. It was not taken back. It wasn't groomed. It wasn't graded to alleviate pools of water that collect and create ice. It wasn't graded so that pine needles and sand don't come back onto the road narrowing it even further, because nobody knows where the edge of the road is. And the pavement company, instead of easing out the curves, went deep into the curve and then abruptly changed at an angle. So, the curves that were on Brook Street have become sharper. The, the, the greenery has been allowed to grow right up to the road edge, so that also has blocked your vision lines. And also, a couple of years ago, when the crews went through to take the trees and trim the trees, they kind of, I guess, figured nobody cared, and they dropped the dead wood into the, into the woods. And there's a lot of dead wood in Grenal. It's, it's very concerning, and there's no way you're getting the water out of Grenal Pond anymore, because under the supervision of do-nothing, it's been allowed to fill in. There are several summers where there's not a lot of water there, but you wouldn't be able to get stuff out for a fire pump with the reeds all there. And so, we have no cisterns. We have, embers are the things that cause fires the most, as we all can see in California, who does go in and take brush out and clean up the dead wood. And we have a lot of dead wood right by the road, across from the houses. There are, what, 80, 90 houses on Brook Street, not including the streets that have to go through Brook Street to get out. So, I think it's a very serious condition. Oh, and the telephone pole, which has been at the top of the safety list for how many decades? That the fire truck can't get into the road to service it. So, I think you guys have some work to do on Brook Street, and I'm trying to bring it to your attention, 'cause I and my neighbors have called several times. We still have the dead stormwood from last winter right up at the edge of the road. So, if a car's coming, you can't even go off to the side. It's, it's really a glorified one-lane road, but I don't want it to become a one-way road. But we have construction vehicles. We have landscaping vehicles. We have cut-throughs with huge tractor trailers, and they come, and they're not going over to the side, 'cause of the trees. And you have no place to go. You have no place to go, and you have these huge logs that weren't picked up last year, and people used to walk up and down all the time when we first moved in. And nobody walks on the street anymore. I mean, very few people do. Very few people do. And there's no place for them to jump if they need to. It's, it's a very dangerous situation, and I hope you'll do something about it.
Okay, I just, I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Just to make sure I'm understanding. Is it, are there particular sections that are more concerning than others, or is it the whole?
Yes. So, if you turn on from 2:25, and you go.
First of all, is that what? First of all, is that where the pole is, right there?
That's where the pole is. Yeah, you tell, that's how you tell people. You have to tell them about it, because otherwise your eye fills it in, you don't think there's a road there. So you go, you turn down there and you go over the first bridge area. That's fairly wide. It does get flooded. It does, it does flood. But it gets wide, and after a rainstorm or a good rainstorm, you are careful about whether or not the road has been undercutted. We had one good storm not too long ago, and you could see about 250, 300 feet up. You could see debris that had, where the road had actually backed up water. It was amazing. Then you get into an area, one, two, about three houses in, the road drastically narrows. And you can tell where it's been narrowed. You can see where trees are cut out, where the plows have hit the trees. You can see banks that have been cut down. But after, when they paved this last time, they didn't go back and recut that down, or, or get all the accumulated sand out. We didn't get the sand taken out this year. We didn't get the dead wood picked up this year. Um, on, so from that point, a mile down to Maple Street. Actually, that little piece of Maple Street that goes to east, that, I'll include that in this. I'll include that in this, although I think I've seen some wood picked up there, and I don't know if it was the resident, or whether the town came. A little bit of both, I'm told. Okay, I encourage you to drive down it, and drive down it from the east street direction, and then try driving down it the other. And we now have a, a community how, a couple of community homes on the, on the, on the street. And they have, um, van vehicles, and they're often in a rush to pick up people. It's a very dangerous situation. It's a very dangerous situation, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
One other question, I'm sorry. You said that you had called-
Nancy?
Nancy?
Sorry.
You said that you had called. Who, who have you spoken to?
I know you spoke with me, and I did get you.
Okay.
I have spoken to her. I've made several phone calls. Um, when the, when the road was first finally paved again three, three years ago, three seasons ago, um, there were lots of comments to people, and we were, I was assured by Gary that it wasn't staying this way, that there'd be another layer put on before, before the winter came. But we didn't get another layer. And then we were patient the next year, and we didn't get another layer. And it's already starting to come up. It's already starting to come up. And, um, and then this last winter, it's like, it's like, we got totally forgotten with the dead wood pickup, with the street sweeping. They did come by and, um, clean up the brush, but they went over the logs. They didn't pick the log, the limbs up, that... They didn't pick the limbs up.
All right, thank you.
Try driving down it. Go in the morning with the school buses. That is, that's another problem. The school buses that they are sending out for the kids from the high school are too large for our streets. And I can say that with some authority after being on a regional school district and revamping their transportation system. The, the buses are too large to safely navigate our roads here in Carlisle. Not just Brook Street, but a lot of streets. And they should be getting a couple smaller buses instead of adding on to a big bus. And it's better for our students too, because a big bus takes longer to fill up, and the smaller bus takes less. And you should send, you send the smaller buses further out. It's actually, actually makes sense.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No, sorry about that.
My name is George Fendura. I live on Maple Street. I spoke to you on the phone, Nathan, a couple of weeks ago. My issue is also the deer issue, okay? We know that it is ordered. The deer hunt was ordered by the, the Board of Selectmen, ordered. It was led by the Deer Committee, led. It's managed by the Conservation Committee, managed. Lots of verbs, ordered, led, managed, but it's still murky. The, the hunt is going to end in a few days anyway, so one might think it's irrelevant. It's not irrelevant. It sounds officious, ordered, led, managed. But the Mosquito Editorial of October 12th, a couple of weeks ago, said it all. It said it responsibly, emphatically, and succinctly, and it also offered a resolution. We're now mired in a non-resolution bandying about strong verbs, okay? It's not necessary. What the Mosquito Editorial said is the Carlisle Board of Selectmen has exceeded its authority. Sounds very authoritative, ordered, led, managed. It's irrelevant. The Carlisle Board of Selectmen has exceeded its authority in even going ahead with the hunt. As early as 2015, we all know that this was voted upon at a town meeting, as a town meeting issue, to be decided by all the people. It has not been in that town meeting. It has not been decided by all the people. You went ahead with it anyway, despite the fancy verbs. The deer hunt must be decided by the people, not the Board of Selectmen, as the vote indicated. Without that, we don't have a democracy here in Carlisle. And the citizens are not getting a fair, a fair voice in their own government. The deer hunt must be halted immediately, even though you will drag your feet until November 25th and you will think it's a moot point. But the deer hunt must be halted immediately, November 13th preferably, as we talked about a week or two ago, on that date preferably, which has now passed. The deer hunt must be halted immediately until the town's citizens have officially spoken the way they're supposed to have spoken in the first place. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Stephen Smith. I'm, um, the, on the Conscom and on the Deer Committee as well. I just want to clarify one thing. Um, the Deer Committee is the committee that manages the deer hunt, not, not Conscom. Uh, Conscom merely just provides, uh, some minor administrative help through making the, um, the signs and stuff. But the Deer Committee is the actual committee that does the management of the, of the hunt, not, not Conscom. So I just thought I'd clarify that.
Okay, anybody else for public input? All right, let's move on to the next topic. Uh, Carlisle 4H.
Stand over to the side here and maybe- Is this down? Okay. So this just, it doesn't project our voice, but they can hear, and there's a camera up there, so.
It doesn't move the podium so that the camera-
Okay.
And so that people can see her.
I'm not going to knock it over.
That's all right.
Well, maybe.
We'll see, we'll find out.
Okay, so, um, I'm Vanessa Maroney, and, um, we're here for the Carlisle Creators 4H Club. And I'm being accompanied tonight up here by, could you want to introduce yourself?
Ariana.
By Ariana Jacob, who is our Vice President of the Club. We just decided Officer, voted on Officers, um, at our last meeting, our first real meeting. And Ariana is in second grade at CPS. And we have a lot of, um, members of the Carlisle Creators over here. If you can, yes, if you want to stand up.
Do you stand up?
Do you want to stand up, everybody? So, and we're missing a few members, but, um, basically, so 4H is, um, a lot about community service and civics engagement and communications, public speaking. And we are going to be trying to learn a little bit about parliamentary procedure and how to run a meeting. And we thought that we would observe you tonight for a little bit, maybe not as long as we might, might, um, have wanted to tonight, but, um, and Robert's Rules of Orders, um, of Order, right? And so maybe Ariana, you can help me by handing out, we can actually give, pass these to Tim and ask him to hand, Tim is right here. Tim is, Tim is our Town Administrator. And we're going to, this, in these folders, if you could all just take one and look at it at your leisure, um, it's just a little bit of information about the 4H program. And, um, yeah, that is for the, for Mary, she yelled already. Um, just about the same thing. Um, and so, and if you are familiar with the 4H program, that's great, feel free to pass it along to whomever, but we just wanted to let you know that the club is in its, um, second year, so we're really just kind of getting our, our feet wet still. And this year, we're trying to learn a little bit more about civics and parliamentary procedure. And, um, so, and do you want to, do you want to just go up and say thank you for, for letting us be at the meeting today? So thank you so much for having, um, us on your agenda. We greatly appreciate it, and I know your time is running short. So, um, I think we might have some things if you want to, and we'll step back over here. I think we might have some recognition-
Everybody might want to-
Just come on up?
Yeah, come on up.
So kids, why don't you come on up, okay?
Everybody for 4H.
Good for us.
And this is Nathan Brown. He's the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. So he's responsible for running the whole- And he, he could have a gavel up here and everything to-
It's all his fault.
Well, welcome, welcome here tonight. Um, not sure how long you're going to stay, but, um, I hope that you enjoy it and that you see, um, how, how it all works. And, um, and that's, certainly can also talk to you about how it all works. Perfect person for that, um, having sat right here, um, and-
And survived. Yeah, sort of.
Um, so I do have some certificates here for each of you. Graham?
Michaela.
Michaela. There you go. Matthew. Ariana? Orla. Aiden. And Max? Caleb?
Nope, nope.
Caleb. For as long as you're able, you're able to stay.
Thank you. We can sit down and then I'll give you the signal and we'll move on. Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Do you want me to move this back, or?
Okay, um, so moving on, uh, or maybe continuing, uh, the topic of the deer hunting. Uh, so when we, um, approved the deer hunt for this year, it was as a pilot program uh, to see how it went and whether or not, um, we felt it should continue and be, um, right before town meeting as a, as an ongoing, um, uh, program. And, uh, so I just wanted to, as we're, we're getting close to the end of the-
I'm sorry, Ariana, could you speak up or put the mics on, because we can hear you?
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, these, these don't project, so I'll have to just speak up.
Thank you.
Okay, if it starts coming back down again, just let me know. Um, so, uh, I wanted just to make sure that we got it on our schedule to talk about, I'm not sure, there was somebody here from the Deer Committee. Um, and so if the, if you wouldn't mind, just come on up and, there's a chair there, we need three chairs, uh, all the way-
That's the magic sinking chair.
Uh, all the way up, come on up to the table.
And you bring your chair up.
Stand there, just?
No, there's a chair here. Yeah, the problem with that chair is that it-
We only have more, we must have more magic sinking chairs that are- Just so everyone knows what we're talking about, there's a couple of the chairs that just sink over time. And so at the end of the meeting, you're finally, you're kind of on the floor.
Get your chin on the, on the table there.
Okay, um, so-
It doesn't project, it's just for the camera.
Yeah. Um, so I just wanted to, uh, chat with you all about what our process will be, um, uh, for evaluating the hunt, um, how, how you'll be getting some feedback back. Obviously, you'll be getting some today. Um, but how we'll get feedback back and, and kind of like what the next steps moving forward would be based upon kind of what we decided last year, the last spring. Um, and so you recently had a meeting to get feedback, or?
So just for clarification, there are three members of the Deer Committee here. There's Kerry, myself. Uh, my name's Dan Boyanich, I'm the actual deer agent, and Steve, who represents the Conservation, uh, Commission. We also have several other members, but they're not here today. Um, so, um, we obviously haven't got any sort of presentation as such to give, so I can just give a very brief overview. Uh, the committee's been meeting, uh, once a month, uh, approximately, probably for the past 15, 16 months. And in that time, we've gone through, um, a lot of different sort of procedures and processes. We've put into place, uh, regulations which have been reviewed and approved by the Board of Selectmen. Uh, we've been involved in, uh, reviewing the various parcels of, of land. There are five properties that are currently, uh, being hunted. Um, we, we looked at, uh, location for the hunters, we looked at parking availability. We, um, we assessed what was required from the hunters, uh, we interviewed the hunters. And, uh, basically, we, um, have managed the program and helped to implement it. I'm actually one of the hunters as well, uh, because we gave priority to residents and employees of the town. So in summary, what we have got is we have 18 hunters in total. Seven of those are residents of the town. And, uh, we put in very strict criteria with respect to selection of the individuals. So no other town has actually done this, uh, but we wanted to set the bar very, very high. So all hunters, as a matter of course, have to have hunter education certificates. And it's a 17-hour course which, uh, is undertaken by Mass Wildlife, by the state. Uh, in addition to that, we insisted that all the hunters had bowhunter education certificates. That's a separate course that's actually provided by Mass Wildlife. Like I say, no other town, um, has actually, uh, requested that of any of the hunters. So we believe that we've actually set much higher standards than any other town in the state. We have been, um, getting advice from other towns, um, with respect to signage, with respect to how, what experiences they've had, um, how they've implemented it. And basically, what we followed was the Dover model. Dover's been running their program since 2009. And, uh, it was very, very useful to actually have a town which was same sort of surface area as, as Carlisle, similar-sized population, um, to give us at least sort of, uh, an idea as to what to expect and, and how to actually implement it. So the deer agent, um, from the town of Dover was very helpful, and we had him over here, and we asked lots, lots of questions from him. So, um, the hunt's been going on since October the 1st. It's archery only. And the state, um, allows archery through to December the 31st. Uh, we actually, based upon feedback from, um, members of the community here, we decided to actually curtail the program uh, to November the 24th. That is the archery-only season. Uh, after that, people can use shotgun and muzzleloader in other places. But we decided, okay, that was a decent cutoff point for us to be able to actually at least, um, um, evaluate the pilot program and see how things have gone. So like I said, 18 hunters, five parcels of land. Um, we've been getting feedback from people, questions and so on. And, uh, what we have published on the web, and it's on our webpage, is a series of frequently asked questions. And we're constantly adding to those. And the purpose of that really is to have, try and avoid repetition and to be able to actually make it available to people so that if anybody's going to- so that if anybody's got any questions about hunting in general or hunting specifically in Carlisle, that that's the place to go to. And I believe the selectmen have all received copies. The latest version has actually got a few more questions added to it based upon recent questions that have been asked. So in terms of how it's been going, the feedback from the hunters has been very positive in terms of their interaction with members of the public. They've had a lot of support from people they've actually met on the trails. Obviously, we have had input from individuals who are not supportive of the hunt and we do listen to them and have incorporated some of their requests into, like I say, the program, such as curtailing it and cutting the whole program by five weeks. What we have got to date is six deer have virtually been harvested as such out of eighteen hunters. By way of comparison, the only data that I've got actually is from two thousand and twelve, which is Dover. That was in their third year. So they started in two thousand and nine, like I've said. So three years into their program, they actually had fifty-eight hunters. They actually hunted until December the thirty first and they had twenty-nine deer harvested. So if you want to choose a statistic, that's fifty percent. So fifty-eight hunters, twenty-nine deer for a full season. We've actually got eighteen hunters, six deer harvested to date. We've still got just under two weeks to go. And like I say, we're curtailing it for November the twenty fourth. So I think, you know, loosely, we're just about on track with what Dover actually produced in two thousand and twelve. So I would say the hunt has actually gone okay so far. It's been a very slow start, but things are picking up. The rut is underway at the moment. And so I anticipate that we'll probably get, you know, two, three, maybe four more deer by the end of the season.
I just want to clarify one thing because there seems to be some confusion as to whether there's, what sort of hunting is going to be allowed on our public lands? So.
Okay. Glad you asked that because obviously, there's been questions about the signage as such. So Conservation Commission signage says no hunting. Okay? And that actually, in alignment with what Mass Wildlife's definition of hunting in, covers a whole range of species. It goes from squirrel, turkey, rabbit, you can, you know, probably about thirty, forty different species. What Carlisle has instituted is a single species hunt in order to manage the ecosystem, and that's where the deer comes in. So this is specifically a deer hunt and it's archery only. It doesn't.
And it will not turn into anything else later muzzle, muzzle loading or whatever.
Correct. It's archery only. We're in control of that. It's our town. We've decided that that's what we want to implement. And it's only for one species, which is deer. So it's a deer management program, which I think is consistent with the no hunting signage that the Conservation Commission has. I've actually checked that with town council, explained that this is a specific hunt for a single species. And he thought there was no real contradiction in terms of the signage. He said that was pretty consistent in his understanding, but it was pretty obvious what was going on.
You know, we did very early on get feedback about the signage. Have we done anything to change that?
We initially had some signs which were letter size and based upon feedback, and in fact, we actually agreed with it, you know, after reviewing it. We decided to actually revise the signs. The signs now much bigger. They're actually doubles height and width. They're very visible, the yellow, and the wording has been reduced so that, you know, they're much clearer in terms of the message that's been conveyed. And those signs were replaced, I think, about probably two to three weeks into the program, I think. Yeah.
And so those signs say what?
I can, I can, I've got a picture of it somewhere, but basically, it just says deer hunt in progress. This is a limited hunt. And all hunters have been screened by the town. And it's got the dates of the hunt as well.
And it's placed very prominently now at the trail entrances and.
It, it's placed at all the entrances to the various properties, yeah.
Um, and so we have two more weeks of the hunt, right? Is that what, that's what you said?
It finishes on a week on Saturday. It's the last day.
Okay, so a week and a half.
Yeah.
After the hunt.
Right.
And what should our process be for evaluation? What process might you go through and then how might we be involved in that?
Well, what we are obviously doing is comparing it to other towns, and I've already quoted the Dover figures to try and get us a realistic estimate as what would be considered a, you know, an acceptable sort of figure. So we do have a metric. I think, I think that's all we can say with respect to, you know, the number of deer and so on. I mean, some people are very concerned about the deer being sort of taken out of Carlisle altogether. The, you know, I think, I think we have a number which is which is reasonable based upon experience from another town. In terms of the impact of reducing the deer population, that's going to be a very difficult one because on the one hand, it has to be over several years for the population to be decreased. And then the time it takes for the forests to recover will also be another few years. So the lag time in terms of being able to say, this is a successful program and this is the impact it has on the forests, is, it's going to take a while to get that. We, you know, we could, I suppose, do some statistics in terms of the reduction in the number of deer collisions and so on, but, you know, I think the a statistician would probably say that's within the noise level, but it's going to be very difficult to actually assess. So one thing we can say is, we do know that there are six less deer at the moment. And therefore, there are six less deer that could potentially impact with cars. There are six less deer that would actually sort of contribute to overbrowsing of the forests and so on. But how to actually say whether we should or shouldn't go ahead with this based upon a hard figure, it's going to be very difficult to actually sort of decide. I think we just have to work on guidance from Mass Wildlife. I mean, they are saying that the deer is overpopulated in this area. And we can say that more and more towns are introducing deer hunting in order to manage the deer population. And we're just doing our part in order to be able to help out in that way. Mass Wildlife issued twelve thousand surplus deer permits, doe permits, for Zone Ten. Zone Ten covers basically everything north of the Mass Pike and east of the four ninety-five, so it's that sector. And Carlisle is in Zone Ten, covers a lot of other towns as well.
And you said twelve thousand?
Twelve thousand doves. That's, that's just the female deer.
From four ninety-five down to ninety?
Correct. Correct.
Twelve thousand surplus extras?
Yes.
Females.
Females.
Not only females.
Yeah. The issue is that, you know, the demographics are changing. There are less and less hunters every year. You know, the population is aging out and there aren't that many young hunters to replace it. So, but the deer population is increasing. So obviously, they're trying to encourage the existing hunters to actually hunt more deer.
So by giving them more than one?
Yes, yes. And it's all strictly controlled as well. I mean, a hunter can't just go and just shoot a deer. He has to have the appropriate permits and so on. And once a deer is harvested, all that data goes back to Mass Wildlife. So basically, they have complete figures in terms of how many deer are taken in each town. And we do have historical figures for Carlisle. Carlisle has historically been producing somewhere between twenty and forty deer a year. So it'll be interesting to see what happens in two thousand and eighteen and how much of that has been from the hunt as opposed to from private properties.
And there's people hunting on private property.
Yeah.
Private property and Great Meadows, maybe?
Only go hunting?
No, no. As far, as far as firstly, as far as the town is concerned, it's archery only for a limited season which ends on November the twenty fourth. As far as private property is concerned in Carlisle, with the owner's permission, so it could be the owner or it could be another hunter that has permission from the owner, they can actually hunt whatever is legal at the time. So archery season is usually from, this year, it was from October the first through to November the twenty fourth. On the Monday after Thanksgiving, for two weeks, is shotgun season. That means anybody in Carlisle on private property can use a shotgun to shoot a deer. They can also use archery as well. It's their choice. Two weeks after shotgun, we have muzzleloader season. And then they can use a muzzleloader for three weeks. They can also use archery. One thing I just forgot to mention is during shotgun season, you can also use muzzleloader. So there are overlapping parts to it. But basically, you can use a firearm such as a shotgun or muzzleloader after the Monday after Thanksgiving all the way through to December the thirty first. And that's all included in those statistics. So that's not broke.
I wanted that clarified.
Right.
Because I think people need to understand
Yeah.
that deer have been taken in Carlisle with guns. And some of those private properties are contiguous with some of our private, our publics. And some people actually, unbeknownst to themselves, basically trespass on those private properties and have been probably in the line of fire or possibly could have been in the line of fire without knowing it.
And so do you know how many of those forty to sixty you said are from the, from Great Meadow? And does Great Brooks deal with that?
Great, okay, I don't know what the figures are for Great Meadows.
Okay.
Great Meadows is archery only. So there will be, there will be hunters in Great Meadows all the way through to December the thirty first, but it's archery only. As far as Great Brook is concerned, that's no hunting.
The average is about, I think it was from two thousand to two thousand sixteen, seventeen, I think it was about thirty-one deer per year. And the standard deviation was about five or six.
Twenty, twenty to forty is the range.
And some of those probably that I also assume have been taken on our public lands.
Quite possibly, yeah. Sure.
We don't, we don't.
Don't know.
We can't tell.
Yeah.
So it seemed to me like part of what we would want to be evaluating and perhaps the easiest part to, you know, because I understand the statistics in one year isn't really statistically significant to understand what the impact is going to be on.
We can't hear you again.
I'm sorry. I was saying that one, just in talking about the types of things that we want to evaluate in going forward, I do think that, you know, when we were talking about instituting this, some of the things that I was concerned about was just making sure that in this pilot program, we knew, you know, how we were going to manage it. We knew that it was manageable. We knew, you know, were there going to be people who were interested in it? Were there enough deer taken to make it worth our effort? And, and the safety and what we learned through it. I mean, I think early on, the sign issue came up. It seemed, you know, in the pictures we saw, we had a sign issue and you addressed that. And maybe that's something, you know, to look into even, you know, improving more, more, you know, evaluating that for next year. And just kind of taking a look at all of the components of it rather than just, you know, are we taking the right number of deer or not? I think it's going to be hard to know that right after one year. If we get six in that many days, I guess maybe it's going to pick up, as you were saying, because they're starting to run. You're certainly seeing them out on the road a lot more now, which.
So the five properties, are the six that have been taken distributed among those five? Or are they grouped?
Okay, so four were taken from Ben, one was taken from Benfield, four were taken from Davis and one was taken from Town and Forest.
There are more hunters in Davis, too.
There are eight hunters in Davis.
Yeah.
They need to come to my backyard. That's where they all park.
So the way we decided how many hunters went to each property were based upon, like I say, the lay of the land, what we considered was appropriate deer hunting property. And also parking was very important consideration. And Davis has actually got four access points and so we put eight hunters in there.
And I know that you said this just before and I'm just not recalling exactly what the number was, but is there, is there a difference in how far you need to be away from a resident if you're bow hunting than if you are shotgun hunting?
As far as Massachusetts is concerned, it doesn't, the state doesn't discriminate their definition of a firearm when it comes to hunting. So archery, shotgun, muzzleloader, they're all five hundred feet. That's the discharge point. So where you actually fire the weapon has to be five hundred feet or greater from a private property unless the owner gives permission.
From a dwelling or from the property as?
From the dwelling.
It's, 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 I think they call it an occupied property. So whether a shed is occupied or not.
What somebody might think of as my property, it's wherever you're living.
It's from a, it's from a, it's from a structure, not from, not from the plot line.
Yeah. It's not the property boundary.
I think one thing you used to say is that safety was probably the primary concern in terms of everything from how many hunters, where they were placed, how high they were in a tree, shooting away from the trail, a hundred feet from the trail, shooting down and away from the trail, and qualifications and capabilities of the hunters themselves and the background check and everything. So safety was very important and yet we, it's still not easy to discern, for example, the state has certain rules about when they recommend that you wear orange during hunting season, whenever that is, which part of the season it is. And there've been questions, why, you know, why aren't we posting signs for you to wear orange when running and walking the trails? And yet, that's, that's not what the state recommends for this hunt at all.
So just to be clear, the state mandates hunters to wear orange during shotgun and muzzleloader seasons, not during archery season. Archery is considered a very safe activity and in Massachusetts history, there hasn't been a single incident where a member of the public or a dog has been injured by an archer. It's never happened.
The range isn't far enough. They, you know, by the time the animal gets in the range, I can recognize what the thing is.
Typically, you're shooting at around twenty, twenty-five yards, you know, thirty yards absolute max. You're shooting from twenty feet up. You're shooting down, in a downward direction. Arrows don't ricochet and fly off for hundreds of yards. That doesn't happen. So it's a very, very safe activity. And like I say, in Massachusetts recorded history, there has never been an incident. Law enforcement in any town has never been called because of an incident. So we, you know, like Kerry says, you know, we, we, you know, safety is absolutely paramount. And like I said right at the beginning, we actually instituted this program mandating that all hunters have bow hunter education certificates. We were actually approached by a lot of hunters who said they don't need this because they've been hunting for forty years and we rejected them. We said, you know, go on the course, we'll put you on the wait list, but you have to go on the course. And like I say, no other town in the state has actually requested that as a requirement. So I think, you know, there's no more that we could do in terms of raising the bar. We've got it right up there. And I think we've had some very, very good candidates as hunters and, you know, like I say, their interactions with members of the public have been, have been very good.
So I have two more questions. One is, first of all, how did people learn about the hunt? The hunters, how did they learn that Carlisle now provided, you know, allowed hunting?
There are two different ways. There was word of mouth and also we actually had two announcements and mosquito, public announcements.
And secondly, earlier today, we had somebody come up and talk about, you know, how long we were giving them to take down the stand. Could you talk a little bit about why the three weeks and what process there?
A lot of the hunters have got jobs and, you know, during the day and in their spare time they hunt. So we thought it was a reasonable thing to actually ask them to actually take down their stands on a Sunday. I don't know if anybody, you all know this, but there is no hunting in Massachusetts on Sundays. It's banned statewide. So Sunday is a good day for a hunter to actually go in and take their stands down. We thought, you know, two weeks would be reasonable. We thought two weeks in a day gives them three Sundays instead of two Sundays. And that that would be a reasonable thing for them to be able to take their stands down. The stands are pretty well concealed. I think the probability of an illegal hunter going in there, accidentally finding a stand and then using it, I think, is extremely, extremely low to nonexistent. I think it's not going to happen. If an illegal hunter is going to come in, they want to be as covert as possible. I think it's going to be very unlikely that they'll want to use a stand and find it in the first place.
And so you said that it's, it's two weeks and one day or is it three weeks and one day?
It's two weeks and one day. So the hunt finishes on November the twenty-fourth. And there are three Sundays with the, the next Sunday being the twenty-fifth of November, the following Sunday and the following Sunday after that. So it's two weeks and a day effectively gives them three Sundays. They probably haven't got any time during the rest of the week to be able to take down their stands if they're working and or hunting. And we just thought that was reasonable. Eighteen hunters. That's, remember the deadline. Now, a lot of them are going to take down their stands much earlier, but we're giving them a deadline to be able, to be able to do that. Like I say, we've discussed this at the committee and we thought this was reasonable.
Is there, is there pre-hunt time that they're allowed to put up their stand?
Yeah, we, well, we, this, this year, we had to rush, uh, a bit because the mosquito unfortunately issued the second announcement two weeks too late. So we had to rush the whole program. Uh, but we managed to get all the interviews done. Cory checks performed. And I think the hunters had like two weeks before the actual hunt started to be able to actually put their stands in. So in that period, they were allowed to actually put their stands in. We gave them, I think it was the, I think it was exactly two weeks, if I recall right. That, that gave them the opportunity to actually scout, put their stands in. But they weren't allowed to hunt obviously until opening date, which was sort of October the first.
And did everybody put their stand in before the hunting season started?
No, no, some of them, uh, uh, put them in later.
Mr. Mahonic, have you had any secret meetings that you can't discuss without public, with public being there?
Jeannie?
I'm sorry, he just talking about safety and they had a meeting.
I understand, but nobody can hear you. Um, so it's going to need to be recognized by the chair.
Yeah, just one second. I just want to ask the, the board if they have any needs before I open it up. Um, meetings, if any, you know, any questions.
You know, one, one sort of elephant in the room about this stuff then is that I think there's a general feeling. I wasn't in the select board at the time that all of this began. But there was a, there was a town meeting when a vote, non-binding vote was taken. It was during the time when everybody was getting Lyme's disease, whether they knew it or not and was afraid of that. And the deer were the problem. And subsequently, that has, has changed into protecting the undershirts and the parcels. But, uh, at that town meeting, there were, I think, three hundred and, like, four to one folks voted that, yeah, we should, we should have, uh, uh, the opportunity to have a deer hunt, a bow hunt, to manage a deer population. So it was fairly overwhelmingly positive toward doing it. And then subsequent to that, the selector looked and said, well, do we, do we have to have a, a town meeting to vote on this? Or is this within our purview to make the decision to hunt or not as select persons? And I, and, and legal counsel said, I think at that time, the selector can make that decision. And did, thinking that the sentiment in the town was overwhelmingly in favor of doing something about the deer. So I, I think the fact that it never went to a vote at the town meeting, specifically at the town meeting, and some folks expected that that was going to take place. I think that's whole, part of this whole angst about process, that we do this right. And I, I guess I got to say, if, if we, if anyone wants to have another vote or have a vote at town meeting, there's a process to go through to put this on the ballot at town meeting. That's not an easy process to get a ballot vote at the town meeting, uh, by design. But that process does exist. So this was a, a pilot. We called it a pilot. We hoped we could learn from it. We hoped we could do it better next year if we continue to go and do it next year. We think it's productive. But, you know, if the town, if the town feels, and folks feel strongly, this ought to go to a vote of the town, whether or not we should, as selectors, should have the right to mandate it. Then that's the process we could go through. You know, so, and, and I, I think it, it, to characterize, Jeannie, you know, I, I respect you greatly and I know you well. I think to characterize your interaction as, as basically being stonewalled or not being heard, you've been heard at every, every meeting that you've attended. And you've attended just about every one that I've been at and recorded some of them. And, um, you may not like the fact that no one felt the need to change anything or stop the hunt immediately. But they didn't. And the deer committee was put in place to implement the program. Not to decide whether or not it should continue, not to decide anything but, not to decide anything except should it be managed well. And that's, that's their mission. And so, I mean, it, it wouldn't make sense for you to be in a committee whose mission is to implement the, you know, the, the deer. And that's, that's just my, I don't, I mean to go to you about that, but that's, it wouldn't make any sense for you to be in that committee to be a, a dissenting vote on the committee every time they met to say, we got to shut this down when you know that the committee's charter is to implement it.
I, I, I beg to differ when they recognize me, okay?
Well, he, he asked you. You can, you can reply to him.
Sure.
Oh, okay. I beg, I beg to.
Yeah, just come up here a second.
Okay. I beg to differ right off the start because the person, my first inclination on this deer hunt was the, the safety. Obviously, the safety of people is the most important part. I am against the deer hunt because of the deer, but safety obviously trumps anything else. It was myself who brought up the signage. If I had been part of that deer committee in the first place, that signage would not have been an issue. I would have been, I would have seen it. And you'd need an opposing voice just for those ideas. And there's no way in the whole world when you have, I forget how many are allowed, seven people? And if you have one person that you know is opposed, there is no way that if everyone else is for what is happening, that I'm going to be, that I'm going to win the vote. If anything, I'm going to put an opposite voice in or an opposing voice, which is going to make people think about what are they doing? And that, that is, that is why I beg to differ with that.
Yeah. Jeannie made some good points with, with respect to the signage. You know, you, improve them, you must admit. They, they are improved by what they were.
But I disagree with the legal because to me, no hunting means no hunting. It should say if there's no hunting for, but exception for deer. It should say that on the big signage that says no hunting except for deer.
So you're already up here if you want to continue to.
Oh, okay. Great, great, great.
You don't have to get up and down, up and down.
Okay. This is great. I, there's so many things. I, I, I do ask for chance. That I'm obviously very intense on this and I, I, I want to be polite. But, and I do want a chance to basically talk about the negative aspects or the, um, the incomplete aspects. For instance, um, the understory question, it has not been brought up about any areas within Carlisle that they will be looking at. So even if the wait is for several years, we don't look, we don't know what we're waiting on. And there was no information brought up about Dover. Dover's been doing this at least since two thousand nine. It's two thousand eighteen. So Dover should have a very good idea of how it affected their understory. So I'm opposed against the idea of hunting for the sake of hunting. Uh, another question I have is, there was a meeting, I went to the deer committee meeting. I think I've a thorn in the side of everyone here. Uh, and there was a private meeting. We had to leave the meeting, uh, because there was a discussion about a hunter that basically had behavioral problems. Uh, we were assured that it wasn't one of the, uh, we were verbally assured that it was not one of the eighteen that was hunting. But I don't know, I, I don't really know. I read, my question is if it's a person who hasn't been approved and who is not allowed on town land, why would anyone even bring it up and why would there be concern? So if this person is on the list, that person obviously should be immediately pulled off of the list. And there shouldn't be a secret meeting or a private meeting that talks about this. So that's another thing about the safety issue. As far as the town meeting is concerned, as far as the town meeting was concerned, the Lyme disease was one of the initial reasons why we went into this. The Lyme disease has not proven to be, the deer have not been proven to be the, the, the cause of this epidemic in Lyme disease. And in fact, new research is showing the fact that the deer may actually be protecting us from Lyme disease because if a tick bites a deer, it does not contract Lyme disease from the deer. And it dilutes the effect of the animals that do pass it. One of the jokes I have that I tell friends is that the main, a lot of the main culprits are little tiny white mice. But it's kind of silly if you kill little white mice and put their heads on the wall. You have to have a, a lot of heads to mount up to be the size of a deer head. So it actually may be that the Lyme, that, that the deer are actually protecting us. And let's see, um, the number of deer killed, uh, this so far on the six, there are six deer have been killed. How many are doe and how many are the bucks right now?
Four bucks, two does.
So basically, the, the, the number, right away, we say, okay, we have four bucks and we're after the doe and we're killing the bucks and, and not the doe. So apparently, it's not working the way they've expected it to work. I did ask the, the, the deer committee what their criteria was when I first went to the first deer committee, deer committee meeting. And I did not hear an answer immediately. It was waited and it was basically waited and waited and waited. And finally, Steve Tobin spoke up and it said the number of deer killed. So we really don't even have a criteria for the deer killed. We don't know if the deer are helpful for us. We don't have any statistics in Carlisle studies about what areas we're going to examine. There is no proof from Dover. And right now, we have a total of six deer killed and maybe in the next two weeks, two to four more deer. Okay? This is, and now looking at that, we look at the state parks. The state park, Great Brook State Park, if the, if the deer are, it's such a problem, I would have expected the state parks also to allow deer hunting, but they do not allow deer hunting. So the parks that we have here, our town lands, are our town parks. And I am nervous about walking wherever any hunter is, whether, I think if I get shot by a safe arrow, I will be as dead as if I were shot by a, a bullet that hit in the same location. So I, I, I don't base, well, we haven't had it happen before as a guideline for safety. All you need is one death and, and that goes to your safety. Anyway, I do want the opportunity that when there is a really serious, uh, question about has this deer hunt been successful, that I be allowed to participate and I politely, I politely ask that. And, um, let's see, one other thing I wanted to say. Oh, as, as far as the town meeting again, the town meeting was not if we should have a deer hunt, but should we take it to town meeting so people can discuss it? And I think if that same town meeting was hea- heard today, you wouldn't have the four to one ratio because people were terrified of the Lyme disease connection when that vote was being taken. So thank you so much for letting me, letting me speak.
Yes.
I like Mr. Kissinger's presentation tonight. I think he was lucid. It goes back to the, uh, the Carlisle mosquito, um, editorial. When the vote was taken in two thousand fifteen, there was a very large Lyme disease scare going on. People were very concerned. Everybody's had it or was going to die from it. Okay? And that's what instituted that vote. And the vote was limited. The vote wasn't, uh, ca- council put aside. It wasn't a vote that the Board of Selectmen could decide. It was a vote that it should be something that the Board of Selection might decide if we give them permission. So it was a two-tiered thing. Counsel feels that you have the authority. The town perhaps feels it doesn't. Kerry basically said, what's the big deal? And I say the same thing. Just put it back into the town meeting. It's a little bit more cumbersome and this controversy will go away. We don't have a criterion, with all due respect. Six deer out of twenty thousand is nothing. Supposedly, where we have to go to wildlife or mass wildlife, is that what it's called? For these twenty thousand permits. And they say there's thirty to forty deer per square mile. There's not thirty to forty square, uh, deer to a square mile if we're only getting six from a two-month hunt. So those statistics are in question. And as he pointed out, we'll never know how, what the long-term effects are statistically. So this thing is a big can of worms and we forged ahead. We have committees, we have subcommittees, we have deer committees and management. Let's talk about Dover. Dover and counting numbers against Dover, but Dover, perhaps, their numbers are based on town forest. We have stuff going in our conservation lands where the citizens walk trails. So the fact that there has been no arrows between anybody's heads historically might be because those were town forests that weren't populated by people who looked at their town lands as, as park. If we take our model from parks, it would be Great Brook and there'd be no hunting. If we take our model as Dover and it's only town forest, that's a different statistic. And yeah, there are no arrows through no heads. Okay? Because that's the forest and people are not used to the culture of walking into those forests because they're not parks, they're not trail monitored. Our so-called hunting areas more mimic the Good, Great Brook, not town forests. So the fact that there's a statistic that said nobody ever got an arrow through the ear is based on, I'll call it more populated, more towns and, and areas of deer hunting that are populated by forest mentality, not park mentality. So there's so many statistics here and different points of view, as I'm trying to bring up, that need to be discussed. And we can't discuss and we can't decide, so we're going to be arguing back and forth. So simply put it back onto the vote where it belongs and let, let the people decide. Because it's just too sticky and we're never going to be able to figure this out without it. It's a little slower, but Kerry had the right idea and it's consistent with conrobocacy and what we need in this point. One last thing. They say the signage has been changed. But there's been a lot of resistance with the Conservation Committee as well as the Deer Committee saying, well, that sign shouldn't be a danger sign or a warning sign because there is no danger. Well, then what do you put in the sign up in the first place? Why are you making twice as big and why are you changing the color? So there's an implicit, you know, contradiction of terms here. On one hand, there's no danger. And on the other hand, there is a danger. But they insist the signs aren't, shouldn't be enlarged, but they did. They should, they insisted that the signs shouldn't be condensed in language, but it was. And this is all to elevate the fact that there's a danger. Yet there's the big wooden sign that says no hunting and people are still walking, not on the paths, but in the weeds because the culture here is that it's a park. You don't have to stay on the trail. So we have all sorts of contradictions. We have a sign that says, on the wooden thing says no hunting. Another thing that's a sign that says hunting a progress, but everybody insists, or some people insist, Conservation people, Board of Selectmen people, as well as Deer Committee people, oh, it's really not a danger sign. Then why are they orange and twice as big now? So, so it's kind of, this should come up for discussion. I'm not trying to embarrass anybody. Kerry had it right. Let's go back. Let's, the pilot is great, but by next year, let's put it on the agenda and have the meeting that we're supposed to and let the people decide. And nobody will be embarrassed. The, no committee has done anything wrong, being led or ordered or managed. Just pass it to the people and let it air out the way it should.
George, I'm not advocating that group.
Okay, well, say yes, of course.
But I'm saying it's, it certainly is available to the town.
Fine. Okay, I am advocating it, but I like the fact that at least you brought it up.
Well, I, I have been so impressed with the way this, folks in this committee have walked all these parcels, walked every one of them, sometimes up to their calves in the water.
Oh, poison ivy.
And poison ivy.
Right.
And they're deer hunters, many of them themselves. They personally interviewed each of these folks that applied.
Yes.
They, they collected the credentials that they had to have in order to be approved. They actually made them demonstrate their capability by taking you to the Red and Gun Club in Concord. Putting them up in a twenty-foot platform and making them shoot at, at a target. I mean, they put them through all the paces. And, and I've, I've seen a stand and I've walked to a stand from the trail. And it's, if anyone is shooting from that stand away from the trail, there's, safety is absolutely, I mean, I, I have no problem. I walk on Margie Finley's land behind our house and then across the continent land all the time. I've never seen anybody out there, but I've never, ever felt unsafe. And in order to get to the trail that I walk on, I have to walk right through the woods and through the muck and through the mire. Never, never felt any, any problems with it because of the way that, that the hunters themselves have described what they do when they're sitting up in a tree stand for three hours at four thirty, five thirty, six o'clock in the morning, waiting for someone to stop just to hold them so then they can get a clear ethical shot, as they call it.
Absolutely.
It's, it's amazing.
I agree with that sentiment. I've been to the deer committee meetings, not just other people here. I've been to the conservation. There's, there's not a person who isn't sincere and that didn't work hard. But the fact that, let me do, give you just a different example. The fact that you want to drive trucks across a marsh or the tundra and perhaps, you know, and, and ruin the tundra or potentially ruin the tundra, you can have all the safety you want, that the wheels are right and the, the skids are right and the ground is frozen and all that stuff. But the question is, did you have to drive across the tundra in the first place? Assuming you did have to drive across it, these guys put all the bells and whistles in it so there's the least amount of damage. So forget the safety issue. Was it necessary in the first place, forgetting that they had to break their tails, to have the hunt in the first place? Now, two answers. You need to hunt because of Lyme disease. That's the issue. Regardless of turning these guys on to manage. You need the hunt because of Lyme disease. That's the issue, regardless of turning these guys on to manage it. Do you need the hunt in order to lower the, the foliage, okay, in order to keep the deer from eating your Christmas trees? If those were the two issues for the reason for the hunt in the first place, who cares how much work they did? They had been given orders to manage a hunt that shouldn't have been managed in the first place. Not that they didn't work, not that they're not the most meticulous, competent managers of a hunt. But the question is, they shouldn't have been called in because a hunt was not warranted because it was based on Lyme disease or it was based on, 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 on the understudy. And those have disappeared, so therefore, regardless of how much they worked and you put $100,000 in and they all have wives and kids and they vote Republican or Democrat, that's all irrelevant because we're not trying to save the investment of these guys who worked their, their tails off. We're trying to get to the essence. Was the, is the hunt next year, or the end of the hunt this year, relevant for the purpose of the hunt in the first place?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, um, I did tell you to come up. There's somebody behind you explaining it.
I'll be very quick. My name is Eva O'Keefe. I'm from Rocky Point Road here in Carlisle. I grew up with hunters. In Buffalo, New York, the deer population became so significant that it was a bait and kill process that was allowed. Hunting went on constantly because of the overpopulation of deer. So I feel very badly, they're beautiful animals, but they have no control mechanism here in Carlisle. You have a very, very large population. You can introduce the wolves if you like. That's an option. I'd rather have, these gentlemen are probably the most responsible hunters I have ever heard speak, so I'm very, very impressed with what you have done. And to assume that Lyme disease does not exist, you had a wonderful physician speak here in Carlisle, um, I believe at the library, from Beth Israel Deaconess. If you want to see the outcome of Lyme disease that is undiagnosed and untreated, it's significant. So I, I believe that, you know, we have a responsibility as citizens here in Carlisle to maintain a balanced ecosystem, if you will. I don't know how else to do it with the deer population. If you had an alternative, I think it might be fine, but I don't think we do. And so I think you have to do something, and I really applaud all of your efforts, to find a very reasonable and sustainable process. Dover has been doing this for a very, very long time. I used to live in, in Walpole. They're very successfully managing their deer population. It is a big concern, continues to be a big concern because of the area. It's also very rural. So that's, that's it. Thank you.
I'll, I'll take just one more.
Will you, someone else?
I have, I would like to speak too. Can I go after my, something new that hasn't been mentioned at all?
Okay, yeah, just, sure.
Thank you.
I guess originally you wanted, no, I, I think the hunters can take it down to Sunday after the hunt ends. They're, they're not working, most of them, I would think are not working on a Sunday. And it's not a big deal to take it down, so why not do it then? The other thing is that there are some negative aspects. There was a dog that got into what was left by a hunter on Davis property and rolled in it. And the entrails of deer were what he was rolling in. I don't know if Dan knows about that or not.
Yeah, we, we, well, one person claimed that a dog rolled in entrails. That person also said they didn't know whether it was our hunter. I contacted the two hunters in, in Davis.
You got eight in Davis, I thought. In Davis, you got eight, but.
I, well.
From the location of it?
Seeing as I know that only two hunters got the deer, those are the ones I contacted. The ones who didn't get the deer obviously weren't involved in, in the process. And both of those, um, were not involved in this, so.
So that was an illegal hunter then that, that killed a deer and that.
I think the person who actually put the complaint in said it could have been, uh, could have been coyotes who killed the deer. So it's, it's an unknown, basically, but it's not our hunters who did it.
Coyotes don't.
It could have been a hunter of private property. I just don't know, but it wasn't our hunters.
Coyotes don't leave part of the deer normally.
Just to be clear, it's in the regulations that the hunters are to take the entrails with them, the disposal of them, so.
Supposed to.
Well, it's in, it's in the regulations, of course. But I, I think to assume that it's the hunters who did this, I think is unfair. I think, you know, we have to work on the assumption that these hunters are doing the right thing because it's in their interest to do it properly. And they are to take the entrails with them as they take the carcass of the deer out and dispose of the entrails. So I think at this stage, my understanding is that it wasn't our hunters that were involved. I do not know. As far as the coyote issue is concerned, it wasn't me who actually suggested this. It was the person who put the complaint in and said it could have been a coyote, so I don't, I don't know. But it wasn't our hunters.
The other thing is that a number of people that we've talked to, particularly if they have dogs, will not go into the trails in the town forest. I don't, I don't know about some of the other, uh, properties, but most of the people, if they find out there's any kind of hunting going on, what they use for trails will not go in. So I don't know who, what people, often if they're, they're not aware of the hunting going on, but that's what we find. The other thing is for the first time, we heard hunts, shots fired in the town forest. And this was, uh, what, two Mondays ago?
Monday.
Which, which we've lived there for 31 years and that's the first time that we've heard shots fired. And this was about 7:15 in the morning. And already a neighbor had reported to the police. And what we observed, we, we did not report it to the police, but we observed, uh, we got in a car and took a ride and there were fresh tire marks coming out from close to the entrance to the town forest. Other than that, we didn't see any cars. We went down Maple Street and went, came back Brook Street and went home. And we did talk to the policeman and.
He was just leaving.
Talking to a person that reported on East Meadow. But that's the first time in 31 years we've heard gunshots from the far, town forest.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah. Before I start, I just had one question. I went to a Deer Committee meeting and I asked about your procedures for cameras. So were the hunters allowed to put cameras up?
Well, I can't remember your question about cameras, but yes, they do have cameras up. I have a trail camera.
And does, and I didn't see anything in the paper or making the town aware that if you go into our forest, that they're possibly on camera? Do you have it? They're under surveillance?
I can speak for myself, and that is that the camera is actually right where the tree stand is. So the camera is at least 100 feet away from a trail and it's actually, the direction it's pointing is, it is pointing away from the trail, but my, my camera is within the shooting range of where the deer is.
But there's eight, you have 18 hunters?
We do.
And they're allowed to change tree stands? I noticed from the last stuff, they're not, they, when you first presented this, it was that they had an approved tree stand, you were going to see it and approve it, and it wasn't going to change. But then I noticed that you're, that's no longer the case, that they're allowed to put it up and just kind of tell you where it is.
It's always been the case that the hunters have one tree stand. That tree stand has a permit sticker on it. And they can put that tree stand anywhere within the designated area that they have been allocated.
And they can move it?
They can move it within, but it has to be within that designated area.
I don't believe that was the impression that I got attending the Deer Committee meeting from you. And I don't think it's well-known to the town that there are all these cameras in our, in our woods now. When I went to the Deer Committee meeting, um, I am knowledgeable about archery. I have a daughter who's an Olympic-level archer. She was head of all outdoor archery events for the USOC, USA Archery for several years, leading up to the London Olympics. So I was, I would like to just correct some things that were said because there were a lot of, I came to the meeting, I wasn't even going to be speaking about this, and I sat there and I was just overwhelmed with some information that I knew was inaccurate. Um, so I would just like to comment on that. It was said at the Deer Committee meeting that these arrows don't go more than 100, 100 feet. Um, a compound has to be tuned to 25 to 35, 30 pounds, 25 to 30 pounds in order to kill a deer.
Incorrect. Legally, it has to be above 40 pounds.
Legally, it can be above 40 pounds, but it has to be at least 25 to 30 if you're using a recurve and a compound. But the compound actually has a accuracy of 430 yards. The 1987 world record was 1,162 yards at a 30-pound bow. So they go much farther than 100 feet. I had brought to your attention that there was a very common knock. Knock is the thing that holds the string at the end of the bow. And if it breaks, the arrow flies wild. I have seen that happen more than I would like to tell you. At competition, I have seen it go the length of a, of 70 yards through a dormitory window and out of a dormitory window on the other side. I can tell you that if you go to an indoor competition in gymnasium and there are high windows and, and an arrow has gone, you will see little tiny pinholes. It goes through the window so fast that it doesn't break the window. It leaves a little tiny hole. And you can, you can see them in almost every competition. You can see these little tiny holes where the arrow has gone wild. It happens. It just happens. And it happens that there was a very common, um, compound bow knock that had been deemed faulty. And I brought it to your attention, that it was faulty because it would mean more arrows going wild. And I did so privately at the time, um, basically to give you guys the benefit of the doubt. As far as the Lyme disease thing goes, I, I think that they have not had a direct relationship for a long time with the deer, but a relationship that is coming to the front, that they have found in Connecticut, is that it's being spread by what you call red midges or spider mites, which we have here in Carlisle. The little red, tiny, tiny, do you know what I'm talking about? They look like little tiny specks of blood. Um, they have been shown to have the Lone Star one, the one that if you get bit, you can't eat meat. Um, so that's there. The other thing that concerned me was when Great Meadow opened up, and I mentioned this at the Deer Meeting. Um, when Great Meadows opened up, almost immediately, I found somebody going through my property. So Great Meadows, the hunting, the archery hunting was allowed on the other side of Brook Street, on a far part of, of, of Maple from me. They would have to cross the street, go through Granal, come across Brook. Then there's my property, and then I have area around behind me that doesn't extend to town forest, but is in that vicinity. I found a man in the back of my property. And he was very, um, when I went out and I said, hey, who are you? What are you doing? And, um, he was rather brusque with me. I have a right to be here, he said. I can go anywhere I want. I especially can go six to eight feet on any side of a property line. He just started going off on me. And I said, who are you? He wouldn't tell me. And, um, in target archery, which is what my daughter did, there are always archers. And I know some of the, the unofficial rules or etiquette. You notify the property owner. You tell them you're going to be on their property and then you, you know, you go on. And if you find your deer on their property, you come back and you give them a gift. Anyways, second day, second guy shows up at my house, rings the doorbell, says he's really, really sorry about what happened. He was the guy who actually got archery allowed over at Great Meadows. And he's really sorry that this happened and it shouldn't have happened. And yes, he should have knocked on the door and, you know, really, really sorry. Please don't report me if you remember what he said. So I was concerned about no trespass because how did this guy have permission to trespass on my property when we have this little sign with a, at night, it has a little smiley face on it because somebody spray painted on it, that there's no hunting in Carlisle without permission of the property owner? So what gave this guy the right to come onto my property? And so I called the police and I called the environmental officer in Massachusetts and I found out a lot of stuff and.
Just, just two more minutes?
Sure. Basically, if you go on and you do a search for trespass laws in Massachusetts, um, we are one of the ones, you don't have to get a sign, you don't have to post, you don't have to do anything because it's assumed that, uh, they can't come on your property without your permission. And, um, so they don't have any, like, ready-made signs that you can buy to put up for Massachusetts. They do for about half of the states. You don't have to paint your post purple. You don't have to post every six or eight feet. I tracked that down. So far, it wasn't funny. But I called the environmental office and I talked to a person and they tell me the following. That the environmental officer can deputize anybody he wants over the phone um, to go onto your property if you have a deer. So any one of the 1800s, any, any 18 hunters, if they wanted to go on, could be deputized over the phone to go on and follow a deer. It's, it's very lax. I also found out that since the town does have that sign up, that protects us somewhat, but not from the environmental officer. So I would like to see the Board of Selectmen really come out with something strong about the trespass law and just, just restate it if you want, but it needs to be restated. The current, well, I don't know if he's the current anymore because he was fired, suspended, or whatever. But the person who had been appointed to be the environmental officer had also been the person who was the NRA agent in the area. And he, um, he, he put this thing on the books that says it has to be posted. And I kept saying, well, where, where did he get that law from about trespass? Because that's not from Massachusetts. He didn't. He just, somehow he got this little paragraph passed. And, but it has no basis. It had, it's like he made it up all by himself. But he told his officers that it doesn't have to be, I said, well, how many feet apart does it have to be? Because it doesn't say anything. It's very generic. And the guy lowered his voice and he said to me, we've been told that if they can walk onto your property and not hit a sign with your shoulder, that they're not close enough. And I, again, please implore you to make a really strong trespass statement because I don't want a town that's littered with no trespass signs either. I don't think that goes a lot to the rural, nice community feeling that we have either. And it really is a change in how this community would be. And again, I, this, this, this selectman has tried to make sure that everybody who does something in this town has to pay for the cost that they incur. And I don't think that the amount that is being charged for these permits is covering the cost of signs. The Department of Health, I think when they came before the budget, said they need another person to administer this. They need to add a person at least half-time, from, from half-time to full-time. Um, and the cost that it is to the rest of the residents. To me, it's not a deer or non-deer thing. I just, I wouldn't go walking in the woods with hunting going on knowing what I know and the holes I've seen in the windows. Um, I just wouldn't do it. It's, and I'm a taxpayer. And when do the eight people out of 18, is that how many you said were from Carlisle? Seven? When do the seven people from Carlisle, when do their benefits outweigh? There's more than seven people here from. There's more than seven people here from town. You know, when does it outweigh? What are, what are the cost-benefits of that? And when does it outweigh? So, yeah, I encourage you to have a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you've heard feedback and I presume you've heard it before and we'll be talking later. Is there any, anything else anybody wants to say, any action anybody wants to take tonight?
You know, I, I'd like to say just one thing, and it's about process. This one thing's meeting is a meeting for the selectmen to do the business of the town as opposed to a public hearing, which is a very different kind of a meeting. This has not been a public hearing. It's been a selectman's meeting. We never get to talk to each other except at this table because of the open meeting clause. And so, when we're conducting meetings, it's sort of us getting to know how each other feels and what we think we gotta do about something that's brought to us. We, we relish community input, which you put in every meeting. But this amount of time that we've dedicated to this is somewhat extraordinary. I just want you to know that. It's not normal for us to be having our little meeting and inviting this much time on a topic where we've had plenty of information coming in from, from a public comment. I don't know if you get the distinction. I'm a relatively new selectman. I never realized that the selectman's meeting was for the selectmen to conduct their business and that an open hearing was a very different kind of a meeting. I never made that distinction until I became the selectman. It took me six months to get that, my mind around that. So, I just, I, I'd just like to call that out and make sure that, that you understand that this is very productive, I think. It's taken a lot of time. It's very unusual for a topic to have this amount of dialogue and discussion and input. And, um, I, I thank, I thank you for it. And I thank you Chairman, Mr. Chairman, for allowing it to happen.
Thank you all very much. Okay, so, um, I think you move on. Energy Task Force are seven-thirty meeting. So, I just came from California, so we're actually- Just got in this morning.
Brought a lung, lungs full of smoke to the meeting as well.
Brought a few. And that was for just beginning the discussion this evening. Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Shall I get started?
Yes, go ahead and get started.
So, Jonathan DeCock, one-thirty Oak Knoll Road. The last two meetings that we attended to discuss this, the Board of Selectmen raised a number of concerns, and I wanted to take a moment to address those. And, there's one right here for you.
No, I was just making sure my mic was on.
Um, so I'm gonna broadly put those concerns into three categories. One is environmental, one is aesthetics, and one is financial. Okay? And so, uh, what I did was, um, I went through and thought about how we could really understand the environmental impact of the possibility of solar in town. And so, I went to the EPA's website and looked up what they had to say about, um, the carbon equivalents of what we're proposing here. And the EPA's website, they're on the front of the, here if you wanna actually go see it. But the, uh, the one that we're recommending, the company that we're recommending in all the places, what the, that's in excess of two million kilowatt hours per year that we would be saving by, or we'd be producing from the solar arrays. And the equivalent of that is, um, one thousand seven hundred and thirty-three tons of CO2. Um, and the way the EPA calculates this is based on, you know, the various plants that they have producing electricity. So, it's coal plants, natural gas plants. They average it all up and come up with that. But even that number, I thought, was not a very good representation for how do you feel about this in terms of the environment? Right? And so, uh, they kindly also convert that number for you to the number of cars. So, it's the equivalent of three hundred and seventy-one cars per year taken off the roads is the amount of energy that this would produce. It's also the amount of electricity consumed by two hundred and sixty houses, with your average Carlisle house here. But yes, two hundred and sixty houses of electricity is the amount of, is the amount of energy that these would produce. Um, and this was a very interesting one, is every year, these solar panels would produce the equivalent in, uh, in electricity of the carbon as if you were to preserve fourteen acres of forest. Okay? And that's based on the size of the trees, the amount of carbon in the ground versus if you take all those trees out and clearcut it and burn all the trees. Right? That's the amount of CO2 that would be released. So, every year, it's fourteen acres of forest that's effectively preserved by the amount of electricity we produce. And, uh, so that's kind of, there, there's a number of different ways you can measure environmental impact. But I thought this might help put it in perspective for you guys to see that this is actually something that has a potential for really positive benefits to the environment just by, you know, the, reducing the global amount of carbon that we're throwing into the atmosphere. Okay? And then, uh, moving on, I wanted to talk about the aesthetics for a little bit because I think that's one of the main concerns about this. Right? And so, uh, so this is a picture of what they have over at Walden Pond. And one of the things that I noted from this is that it doesn't need to look industrial. Right? Walden Pond did a great job with this. And there's two things in particular that I think made this a beautiful canopy. One is they painted it green. Right? And so, it fits in more naturally with the area around Walden Pond, the beautiful area there. And the other is they, instead of using a big I-beam to hold it up, they used a nice truss so it feels more airy. Right? So, I think aesthetically, there are things that we can do that would be good there. Then, uh, this is actually a picture of the Newton DPW. It's put up by one of the companies that, uh, that responded to the RFP. Um, and you can see this is a, an equivalent, this is a thirty-foot high canopy so they can park their big trucks underneath it. And they can actually also be done very nicely, even in an industrial setting. Right? So, it's quite nice there. And this last picture is also done by the same company and is the landfill in Groton. And you can see the panels are not sticking up very vertically. Like, like the ones in Billrica stick up really, you know, kind of, they're, they're kind of almost an eyesore and to some people at least. Right? But they don't necessarily have to be that way. And the company that puts these in puts in a much lower plane when they do that. So, so that's the aesthetics. One other thing about, um, the DPW that I wanted to mention that you guys had brought up was the traffic problem there, especially when it gets to peak. Right? And we wouldn't wanna have poles in the middle causing traffic problems, you know, making it worse. And I think this actually represents a great opportunity for the town to improve the traffic there. Right? Because, uh, if we come in and we say, "Okay, we've got, you know, this, this idea of putting something over top of us that could potentially keep all the rain and the snow off of us there, which I think would be a benefit to begin with." But above and beyond that, it gives us an opportunity to rethink the traffic flow through there. And to have the company that would put this up actually help do that. Right? We wouldn't have to fund it ourselves. We could, you know, use the funds that are coming from here to do that. So, I think there's the possibility that, um, we could actually have multiple wins on this. Right? By improving some aspects while generating nice solar power, while having a nice place to, to go to the transfer station. So, lastly, on the financials, uh, we, we have heard feedback from a number of town residents and from you guys. Some people think that it's a lot of money. Some people think it's a very little amount of money. Right? And one of the companies, the one that we're recommending, is actually offering the town of Carlisle an excess of four million dollars for a twenty-year period. Right? Now, we can debate whether four million is a large number or a small number. But if we think about it, right, we just paid half a million dollars for six acres of field last year. Right? And if we used the money coming from this to do that same thing, we could do it every two and a half years. We could buy another six acres of field. Or, last year, we also approved three million dollars for the communications. Right? For our fire and whatnot. And if you think about it, right, the money coming from this could pay for that and still be able to buy two of those six-acre parcels. Right? Or, the school that we put up a few years ago. Right? The finances for that, it was about a fifteen-million-dollar school. This would pay for a quarter of it. Right? So, I think if we look at it in terms of that, we stop thinking about, is that a large amount of money or a small amount of money? Because to me, it's a huge amount of money, but, you know, I'm a person. I'm not a town. Right? So, um, so I think, uh, understanding what it is that we could buy with that money, I think is an interesting way to look at it. So, that's the three aspects that I wanted to bring up based on what you guys had said before. Do you guys have other questions for us? Or, I mean, what we're, what we're essentially asking for here in, in layperson's terms is we think that it's a good idea to select one of these companies so that we can begin negotiations and have each of the town boards really weigh in on what should the conservation, you know, stuff be? What should the school, you know, what does the school have to say about how this should be? The planning board, um, you know, Peter Gambino has assured me that they're gonna make sure we don't put up an eyesore and it's gonna be properly screened and the traffic pattern's gonna be good. So, we'd like to get that company that we select negotiating with all the town boards to come up with something that is really good for the town of Carlisle, both from an environmental perspective and from a financial perspective. And so, what we're asking for you guys to do tonight, or some future night if you decide not to do it tonight, is to essentially approve going forward to the next step, starting to have the discussions with the board, with the various boards in town, and, uh, and see if we can actually come up with something good. And I think it would be reasonable for us to come back to you guys after we get all the boards to negotiate and sign off on something, to say, "This is really what we wanna do. Can we actually execute to it?" So, what do you think?
So, I, I just have a couple of questions. I'll go, I'll go first. How would we be moving forward in what we would be asking them to do? So, I guess a different way of answering it is, what are we committing to when it comes to these designs? You know, there, there's, there's various aspects of what we could be doing. We could be doing something at DPW where the cars are. We could be doing something in the woods between DPW and the road. We could be doing something over the school parking lot. We could be doing something over the, where the buses park. We could be doing something between Spalding and the school. And I see those as kind of five different potential projects. Would we be presenting it that way? Or is it kind of like, would we be saying, going into this saying, "Okay, we're gonna negotiate a contract with you to do all of them and therefore we're committing to all of them. It's just as a matter of design."
Well, I think we divide, there's really four aspects. We've got four RFPs, a canopy or a ground mount at each of two sites, so that's the four. So, we gave you a memo with a suggested voting. And I think each, you really need to vote on each of those four properties independently just to say whether you wanna go to the next step. 'Cause if you don't, if you're never gonna go with one aspect, well, we should just drop it out right now. And we should only look to negotiate to something that we may do. And I guess the idea to follow up on Jonathan would be to come up with a, um, the next step, which would include renderings, a detailed layout based on the site information, how many trees, better idea of exactly what trees would come by, come down. And if there's any additional financial adjustments that we would have those, we would also have, the companies have made certain clarifications on the lease. If the lease was developed by town council, so it would, but so any deviations that they wanna take, town council should look at those to say, "Is this reasonable or not? Or this adjustment is okay." So, that's really the next step we're asking for and that when we get those final designs, final renderings, and we've gotten feedback from boards, they would come back to you for-
Right. I think what, what we need now-
With the one that you're proposing we select, did they, did they, you know, I, I saw these here and I guess Jen, what you sent me was just as good as it was gonna get. It, it's really hard to see what it is. I mean, I think this is just showing where the overlay district is, right?
Yeah, that's just the overlay district.
Did they provide anything?
Yes.
Yes, we have beautiful color pictures.
Yeah, similar to what Sunbow proposed or their-
You've seen these before.
Are they in this?
Yes.
In our presentation.
That's, that's the one that doesn't really, but it just wasn't in this packet.
Yeah.
That's the RFP package, so that's, that was the information sent to them so that they could produce.
Well, this is their response.
We had better ones. You had given us another-
Yeah, we had whole drawings of our layouts.
And we lost those.
Want the nice big one?
Yes.
It's one location.
And so-
So, I don't believe we're committing to the design that's printed out here. I believe what we need to commit to is the locations and then work with the town boards that, you know, manage the land to say, "What exactly do we need to do here?" Because, for example, the one that you're looking at, it's covering part of the stream. And so, there's no way the Conservation Commission is gonna allow that exact thing to happen.
That's why we call it a negotiation.
Right.
Start entering into negotiations on each site and depending on what sites you guys-
This is the back of an envelope sketch.
Exactly.
And to refine it.
Exactly.
These are concepts.
Get a better feeling for us. How much is it just a back-of-the-envelope sketch? And how much is, is we're saying, if you can figure it out, you're gonna be able to put something between DPW and the road?
Right. From being in this business, I can tell you that the, the main factors are the size of the system, you know, that drives their financials. You know, but these kind of details of what it looks like and where exactly it's gonna be located, it, it may affect the financials, but it, that's not the greatest part of the financials. At the bid stage, they're trying to take it to the next step. You know, 'cause they don't know what we approve or not approve. So, I think that's kind of where it is.
Yeah, we, we, we're much farther along on the DPW sites than we are at the school.
Right.
Right.
Since I understand that we could move forward with that part of the project while the school-
Is developed.
Plans are put more in order and we get everybody's-
Yes, we have to go and go back to town meeting and get a bylaw adjustment to do it at the school.
So, I think we can, I mean, I, I guess what I'm suggesting is that we move forward on the DPW site, holding off the school site until that's further along developed. And at least get that part of the program underway in terms of negotiations and everything. We've gotta find out things that devil in the details. But at least we, I think we can, we could probably do that. And we'd be in pretty good shape, at least. And we'd be one step up on, on where we are in the block system as well.
I think we also would need a little bit more from you on what we should be pursuing also because obviously, if, you know, as Bob put together, a little, a little sequence of motions that maybe we're looking for from you guys, I don't think you've got a copy of them yet.
No, they haven't.
We got them. And the reason for that is because, you know, you know, our time is precious and we don't wanna be working on something that, you know, this board is not gonna support. You know, I, I just had a discussion with our school committee chair outside and he was curious and he couldn't stay there till this late.
I was wondering where he was.
You know, he's, he's all, he's supportive of this and he asked, "What, what were the next steps?" And I says, "Well, if the selectmen say okay to the school sites, then the next step that we would take would be is to go to the school board and start educating them on what we've done so far." And then, at, at that same time, we would hope that the selectmen would create another group, which we suggested in our last presentation, maybe also in these, these motions, to conclude a school committee member and, and, and depending on the site, that group's gonna be variance because the school doesn't have any wetlands in any of the areas, but the DPW site does. So, we really wanna a cons comm person on there to help facilitate the, you know, the movement of this whole project. So, um, you know, so we, there are several, um, I guess, directions that we need from you guys so that we can move forward, you know? And one of them is exactly that, the DPW sites, the one of them or two of them, depending on what your thoughts are and what you've been hearing from the general public.
For the DPW, particularly over the, the parking area, there is, Gary's been involved in that.
Gary's already been briefed. Um, he saw some sketches of what we sent back to the proposers for our second set of questions that we asked them to provide to us. And he looked at, you know, some layouts that he said were very workable. Having been there today in the rain, the traffic issues are the least of our problems.
The rain is the biggest?
Well, the rivers are the biggest.
Well, I was just gonna say, in addition, the, um, the municipal facilities committee has been looking at the DPW shed. It needs a new roof and we've been talking about doing it in such a way that it would then be support solar panels as well.
That would be more of just a town thing or would that be a part of this?
It could be, you know, it depends on the negotiations and, and how soon that DPW building gets, you know, strengthened and whatever. Uh, one thing before you move a little bit forward, I wanted to clarify something because you called us up as the Energy Task Force. This, even though there's three members of the Energy Task Force, this is a work group that was Tim put together to evaluate the proposals. And that's one of the reasons why we're asking you to create another group to do the negotiations with whatever contractor we decide on or you decide.
Just say one more thing about the school. You know, the town meeting is less than six months from now. So if it was gonna be voted on in town meeting, you'd really have to get a design, getting buy-in, and then actually get a bylaw developed and changed in that time. So I'm not sure it's a good, you could get down the road.
Yeah.
Maybe run into...
Yeah, I mean, we could go get the bylaw first and then start the process. Or we could start the process and get the bylaws.
You hate to do.
Well, it happens, it's not gonna happen at all.
Right, right.
And you, you would probably want some plumerie sketches of what the contractor thinks is doable at the school, not just concepts, but to present a town meeting so that people can understand what really would happen to those two parcels, those areas.
The school district decide, the committee, they're, they're gonna wanna see more details. These sort of renderings are gonna look like a ton.
The school is interested in knowing also, by the way, because they need to do some work on their, their parking lot.
Yes, he mentioned that.
And they don't wanna do anything if we're gonna be doing this. And frankly, I've been a little confused as well as to, you know, which is the cart and which is the horse? Because we can't be building solar panels on school property, can we?
I think what they're just, I think what they're just wondering, what you're just wondering is, would we not want you to be talking to the school committee about doing this?
Right. The school, school committee's eager.
We can't decide whether or not the school committee's gonna...
Exactly.
Right.
They say, no way.
We can say, you know, hey, if the school committee goes along with it, we go along with it.
Well, it still has to go to the town.
And it's, yeah, but then it's still, yeah, but if we go to town meeting and the board of selectmen is saying, no, we don't think this should be done, then... I think that's what you're looking for, right?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? And then I'm just gonna open it up and see if...
I, I just, I need to weigh in, my man. My bias is that I don't like to see trees cut down. It's a bias, it's an emotional bias. It's not scientific, I don't know how many carbon credits we, I don't understand.
I think reasonable people can disagree on that one, so...
But when I saw that of the three companies that proposed, that one of them said flat out, who makes their living by doing solar installations, we don't think it's appropriate to do small scale solar and cut down trees to do it. What, what company, what would, if I were in that business, you know, why would, I would probably never do that. I'd probably say, you want it, you can get, you can have it. But this one company said, we don't think it's appropriate. And then I looked at the place that I think is the most sensitive in terms of cutting trees down because you can do it without asking mother may I to anybody, is along Lowell Street. You don't have to get anybody's permission to cut all those trees down and install eight foot off the ground solar. And so I looked at the responses from the other two companies who said, we'll do it. And for that part of it, the one said, you can generate seventeen thousand five hundred dollars a year in revenue by doing that. The other company said you can generate forty-three thousand dollars a year by doing the same thing. So I thought, well, you know, we're at a stage where these are swags. These are scientific wild guesses. And nobody really knows if, what it's gonna buy, right? I mean, really, do we?
Well, there's significant differences in the two proposals that make it so that one proposal actually produces a lot more electricity than the other one.
Because...
Mostly a function of the angle of the solar panels. If you angle them too highly, then they shade the ones behind them and you can't get enough of them in there. If you drop them down so that they're not as much of an eyesore, they're actually lower to the ground, you can actually get more energy out of them.
All right, but I think it's fair to say that until you negotiate, get into negotiating with these folks, you really aren't gonna know. And I, the other thing I noted on this, when I looked at the installation costs, the hookup costs, it was very, um, you know, they were baked into the bottom line numbers that you looked at. But I, I did some figuring and if you increase those costs by ten thousand dollars, any one of those installation costs by ten thousand dollars, it reduced the revenue by sixty thousand dollars. It had that much of an impact on the bottom line. And in every case, when I looked at every one of these, the impact was the same, a sixfold impact. So if you're often, if you're not in the, you know, sort of estimating those installation costs properly, and they range from ten thousand dollars in installation cost for one of the areas to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So there's another huge range in, of uncertainty. Anyway, um, long story short, my, my thinking also got me to, yeah, I guess it can look okay and it doesn't have to look as bad as Belrika. You know, I drive up and down Lowell Street on my way home every day and I look in the woods with all the, all the leaves gone. And I look at the streams and the, and the rocks and the contours of the property and I think, you know, if I lived in Rocky Point and I had to drive out my driveway every morning and look at an array of solar panels, I'd wonder, you know, is it me, is, am I the only one bothered by that? Or if, if I try to sell my house, is somebody else gonna be bothered with that and wanna pay me less money because they have to look at that every day? And so I went to our assessor and I said, collectively, the eight homes at Rocky Hill, how much in taxes do they pay? It's almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, it is.
Now, if they were impacted by ten percent by that, we'd lose, if we got, as in one estimate says, we, for cutting down those trees, we'd get seventeen five, we'd lose ten of it. We'd be down seventy-five hundred bucks. I'll write you a check to make the difference if you don't cut the trees down. I mean, I, I, I think that... The impact on the community. You know how much we love our trees, you know how much we love our vistas. And I think if you, if you do go, and I, I don't know how these guys are, we're all gonna vote. If you go to Ameresco and start negotiating, we might find that we're so far from where we thought we'd be on installation costs and generation revenues that, you know, we might have to back off and say, let's go to Plan B. And instead of Plan B being this other, this third company you thought didn't have a whole lot of experience, maybe we ought to go to, to the company that said, we don't think it's appropriate to cut down trees and we're in that business. And by the way, have you thought about putting a canopy at Spalding Field? Where everybody watching their kids play soccer would benefit from being in the shade? It's not even on anybody's plan. So they gave us some, some thought that seemed to be tuned into, to Carlisle. So I, I would, I would hope that if we couldn't come to terms with Ameresco, that we would, Plan B would be, let's take a look at Sunbug because they seem to be so much better attuned to what we are all about in, in Carlisle. So that, that would be, that would sort of be my, I guess, my recommendation. I don't, I'm, I'm not gonna vote in favor of going ahead with Ameresco because I don't, I just don't think we ought to be cutting trees down.
So there's, there's a few things that you can decide here, right? One is the location and the other is the company. And you can decide two different companies for the two different sites if you want to. We can't decide two different companies at the same site, that would cause trouble. But two different companies at the two different sites is okay. And you can decide canopy or ground mount at each one. Or both.
I think canopy, from what I've seen of Kennedy at Walden Pond, I mean, I, I think it makes a heck of a lot of sense. But anyway, so that's, thank you for indulging me.
Thank you.
Well, I, I, I guess I was gonna say what John was saying. One of the saving graces of this is that you seem to have broken it up so that we're not stuck.
Right, it's not an all or nothing.
Yeah, with all or nothing. And that if we could always say, yeah, go, you know, negotiations break down with the tree part, we could still do the canopy and it's not...
You can start with both and get, and get, you know, we broke out the financials for doing half the job. Specifically, we also got, we went back to them and said, what if the interconnection costs change? What if the incentives change? We tried to get matrices so we can actually, so people can't, the vendor can't later on say, hey, I didn't have that covered. So we did try to get that, but you, you can say, yes, canopy, yes, ground mount. And then decide, oh, well, I don't like the ground mount. But I, you don't have to go one way or the other now and then come back later. So I think that's how we're...
Authorized negotiation on the ground mount, but then not follow through with it.
Right. The only thing we, the only thing we can't decide is to pick Sunbug for the transfer station because they didn't submit an offer for that one, so...
And the other thing I want to say is, is over the years, so we've gotten energy tasks, we've got a number of inquiries about the overlay district over the last three, four years. Various companies occasionally come in and say they wanna do this or that and they give, you know, might put a proposal that we liked. And, um, you know, we definitely never felt it right that you would just go with a company that came off the street and said, here's a proposal, let's, let's do this. So, you know, this is, was a way to take this land, which is approved for this function, and actually go out and, and get an open bid in RFPs and, and do a detailed job of it so we can kind of...
Well, you're doing, you're doing, you've done what you've been tasked to do.
Put it for bed once in all versus having people, you know, having companies come in and we're at the timing, we're at a good timing in terms of, we're at the beginning of an incentive program instead of the end of an incentive program. So that's, that's kind of the idea.
I'm glad you mentioned the incentive program because I looked at, at block three versus block four.
Yeah, there's a big difference, yeah.
Big difference, but what's even more interesting is that the differences range from ten percent to eighteen percent.
Yeah, right, they are, yeah, it is.
That's the state.
Pretty well known what the difference is going from block three to block four in terms of the four percent incentive. So why is there such a, again, why is there such a wide range?
So if I could speak to why there's a difference in, in, and you had mentioned this before, Carrie, what there's like a multiple of differences. And one of the reasons is there's a certain amount of after-tax cash flow per year that the investor would say the, the project produces overall. But the investor is gonna take whatever their specified number is. So if you have a hundred thousand dollars of overall benefit, well, the investor might be taking eighty-five thousand of that and fifteen thousand goes to the town. So another company might have a, they get a hundred and ten thousand or a hundred and fifteen thousand. So their difference is not that much. But they have double the return to the town because they might have a different rate of return in a, in a larger system.
Right, yeah, if they can get more energy out of it, then they get more money.
So it's kind of misleading, the, the multiple, because we're only getting kind of the tip of the iceberg, not the entire cash flow.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to, I'm assuming you are, want to talk about this, yeah?
Hi, good evening, my name's Laura Ballastero and I live in Carlisle, I also sell houses in Carlisle. And I'm here to tell you that any time I've sold a house that had a solar system on the ground, it has devalued the property. So please make, be cautious when you decide to put this in a residential area because the homes that are budding this property will definitely be negatively impacted. I can tell you that I'm, I, I'm all for solar power. But even homes that have solar systems on their roofs, buyers are so turned off if they can see it by the street. It's fine if they can see it from, if they don't see it from behind. Even if they can see it on a neighbor's house, it's aesthetically very much a turn off to buyers. So I do feel that, um, if you are gonna pursue this in any neighborhood that have homes, those sellers or those owners will definitely be negatively impacted. So please, when you think about it, have mercy on those people.
Thank you.
Hi, Eva O'Keefe, Rocky Point. Thank you very much for speaking so eloquently to our concern. It is not the solar power that we are against. But it is the fact that, you know, not only does Elizabeth Ridge Road, right, have the access to the transfer station, they have the sand pile, they have all the junk that goes through that, they have the traffic. And now, right, we're gonna take down the trees that block that so that they can have the, you know, unsightly solars. So what we would like is really for the town to purchase, I walk a lot of the land in Carlisle. I have for the twenty years that I have been here. And there are lots of pieces of property where I walk through woods and then I have this wonderful field in front of me, right? We buy that. We buy all of that. And I don't understand, I have never understood why we can't develop something that requires no trees to be taken down, that abuts no property, right, no homeowner's property, and use that for town-developed solar. I think that would be very good use of the taxes that we pay. And the aesthetics, I, I think that would be wonderful for the town. So I just want to state that. But, uh, you know, we vehemently oppose the, the, um, the solar overlay at the transfer station because we already take a hit, you know? I think, you know, the real feeling is in the neighborhood is that, jeez, you know, all of that condensed activity, right, is within a very short range. You've got all of the municipalities, you have all of the transfer stations, you have all of the school. And if you go out a little bit, you have none of that. So I think we should kind of create a balance.
Thank you.
Could I, could I answer a little bit that?
Let's get through all of them in the middle of the pack, yeah?
I'm George Payne, I live on, at Benfield Farms. And my question has more to do with the financials. I'm neither plus or minus on solar. Is that I know with cars, they've been reducing the amount of subsidies from the state government. And I know eventually all subsidies will be reduced. Now, how much, I, I don't know if subsidies are, are having any part of the financial equation for solar farms. And if subsidies suddenly go away, how much that will affect the amount of monies that the town would get? If, I mean, the profitability and therefore how much the town would get out of it. I'm not looking for numbers, just are they affected by subsidies?
Yeah, the, there's a thirty percent federal tax credit on all solar projects that the investor would take advantage of. There's a new mass incentive program, but the incentive is locked in when you get qualified for the program. The incentive's paid by the utility for twenty years, it's a fixed payment from the utility. So once the project is approved, that payment is guaranteed.
I'm talking about the, the government's subsidies, not the utilities, it's just the, like when you buy a car. I know a good friend of mine just bought a new car and was considering, um, you know, a hybrid. And they got, they decided not to because the subsidies are now so low.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is the incentives are, are locked in when the project starts. So the, the tax credit and there's accelerated depreciation, so those are all determined when they...
Just curious.
No, no, you, no, I...
It's a very good question, actually.
It is, but if it changes, it changes for future projects, not for the project.
Right, exactly.
These numbers are based on now.
We're leasing the land and it just keeps getting paid, no matter what.
And what the town would be entering into is a lease, for a twenty-year lease, so that's a fixed price. It doesn't matter what happens.
The town plus benefits.
Yes, the towns, yes, it doesn't matter what the incentives change because the contract is signed for a lease for twenty years, based on these numbers or whatever we did negotiate.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Yes, and then, and then I'll come back.
I'm Drew Kissinger, I live on Curb Street. Uh, I'm a mechanical engineer. I studied solar engineering in school, I have solar panels in my house. There are two ways as a homeowner you can install solar panels in your house. One is you take out a mortgage or if you're super rich, you just pay for it outright. All of the benefits, all the financial benefits accrue to you, to me as the homeowner, right? I get all of the, you know, my meter spins backwards, I get all that money, I get the, the state, um, the tax incentives. All that comes to me. The other way you can do it is you can hire one of these companies that comes in and installs solar panels on your roof and they own it all. The other way you can do it is you can hire one of these companies that comes in and installs solar panels on your roof, and they own it all. And the reason they do it is not because they're a charity, it's because they make a ton of money doing that because they get all the money. Carlisle has an excellent credit rating. We spend a lot of money on things that are just complete liabilities, like schools, in the sense that, in the, in the, in the accountant sense of it, right? They don't generate any revenue at all. Solar panels are worth a lot of money, that power, it's, what was it, twenty-five megawatts? What's the street value of twenty-five megawatts? And there's no reason, I guarantee you, there is absolutely no reason why Carlisle should finance a project like, or shouldn't finance. We should finance a project like this and get all of the economic benefit. We should not go with a company that is going to take, you described it as an iceberg, and they're taking the lion's share of the economic benefit and we get the tippity-top. That is, that makes absolutely no sense. We have an excellent credit rating, we can get anybody to do this job, it's not even new or exciting. We've been doing this kind of solar insulation for thirty-plus years. And right now, it makes so much sense, it's actually cost-effective to do it. You hire a structural engineer and you get someone to install prefab solar canopies over parking lots, and you take all of the money. I know we're, we're looking for a source of revenue in town, this should be a source of revenue, period. If you don't make the maximum amount of money out of this job, you are completely missing the ball. That's, that's my perspective.
So you're not against the solar, you're, you are saying we should own it, not lease it?
Absolutely, we can finance this and we can make all the money, you know, if it's, they make it really easy to do the job. Oh, you just sign on the line, we'll do everything else, and we'll give you a check. But that check is like ten percent of what they make, it makes no sense. You know, we, we, we can, we can finance any of this stuff and do it all ourselves. Or have somebody, you know, pay somebody to do the design and install, but not take any of the continuing, the added revenue. It makes no sense.
Well, it's a great comment, and that's really where we started on this project.
Where we wanted to go.
And we, we did the estimates, and this makes more money. Because of the tax benefits to investors.
The town doesn't get any of those incentives.
Town has no tax benefits, so they're, we're paying cash. The other thing is when, when, if the town finances this system, it's a higher interest rate than it would be, say, a school. So it's, 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 I don't know all those details, but we got quotes on financing from treasurer. Treasurer, in terms of what they could get for a twenty-year bond to pay for it. And it really didn't, we presented these numbers, we presented these numbers six or nine months ago before we started.
Yeah, I'm sorry, totally ignorant.
No, 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 that's fine. No, and the selectmen, you know, after discussion, really decided it'd be better leased, there was no liability, we wouldn't have to maintain the system, and the numbers were better than the town could do it itself. Because really, that's kind of where we started, we wanted to own the system.
Okay, just one more comment and I'll go home. And I'm sorry you guys are here later because I'm talking, but the, is there a way to make a public corporation that would get the tax benefits? I mean, are there other things you can do? Question.
I don't know.
So, before I tell you, why don't you go ahead and, everybody else has been responding.
I, I just wanted to respond on the issue of other pieces of land. The, the Energy Task Force, and especially Bob Clark, looked at every single piece of land the town of Carlisle owns. Almost all of it is under conservation restriction and cannot be used for, for solar power. The two possible places in town were the school and the solar overlay district, which has already been designated.
Yeah, I'd like to add some more to that, Helen, too, is that, in order to put a solar system in of this size, you need three-phase power and you need it close if you're gonna make it beneficial and more economically feasible. And that's another issue because to bring in three-phase power to those land, that area, that, you know, there's a lot of private lands that have open acres and fields, but to get three-phase power close to it, to make it feasible, is very expensive. And that's kind of the weighing factor, too.
Thanks, yes.
Hi, I'm Lee Tappan, I live on Fisk Street, been here about eighteen years. And I just, I have nothing technical to add, I just wanted to weigh in since I've been sitting here all night with you all. And thank you for your service and thank you for looking into this. I like it when things that we build are structurally useful, it's not just the solar energy. So I like the canopy, I like the idea of shade structures that can produce power. I really don't like the ground, I just don't like taking a field and, not even cutting down trees, but even if it's a field, I don't like to see just, it's like tech, tech litter to me. But that's just my opinion, and thank you very much.
Anybody else?
So one other thing?
The, so the transfer station, is the stuff picked up by weight or by volume?
Are you talking about the trash?
Yeah.
Tipping is by ton.
And, because if you cover it and it takes out the water weight, have you thought about the cost savings you might have there if it's by weight? Because it makes a big difference.
We hadn't thought of that, thank you.
Okay, we're on a technical conversation.
We're more on solar instead of trash.
Who'd have thought?
Okay, so...
I'm sure they count for the water.
That's it?
I'm sorry, you asked, I waved you off, may I make just one comment?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Why not?
I hate being the new guy who shows up the last minute, thank you all for the work you're doing and for allowing public comment on this one.
Can you state your name and your address?
Eric Zerman, one sixty-eight Sunset Road, I'm unabashedly pro-solar, I have a forty-eight panel installation on my roof, I have zero-energy house, I'm with you in heart and spirit all the way. I feel like the first project that we do here has to be unabashedly beautiful because we're gonna need the townspeople's support to do so much more of this. And so I would hope that at the transfer station, we spend a lot of energy thinking about what design will look like so that we create something that we can show off as opposed to something that we want to hide. And I would, you know, as a, as a base point, contemplate doing just the canopy and not mowing down all the trees because I think the degree of feedback that you'll get from that will be extraordinary and it'll be very, very hard to make that look as beautiful as you might make a canopy look. So, thank you all, I'll stop there because...
Yeah, good points.
A meeting, not a hearing.
All right, so I think that's it for public input. So we have a lot to think about here. I guess, you know, I guess we'll just kind of, Carrie already kind of spoke in your, your thoughts about it. Does, do you want to add anything more after your son's?
Yeah, I don't know, is it, does it violate the open meeting law if you talk to your son about these things?
What about, you know, I mean, he threw in there something that we were kind of all quiet about, I mean, we're, I don't mean, we didn't want to talk about it, we didn't know the answer. Does it make sense to look into that, or?
They did, they did look at it.
No, probably corporate, public information.
I have no idea what he was talking about.
Energy Trust Fund.
Trust.
Don't you only then still get the tax benefit if you have to pay taxes?
Yeah, probably, so it probably...
So we have to be something that we were actually generating income on in order to get the tax benefit?
It would have to be a private tax-paying entity.
And also you'd have to raise the funds to build the unit.
So we'd have to come up with a business that actually made money, we're not good at that.
Is Conbridge Electricity, is that the same, is that the same symbol?
No, they're, they're electric plants, no.
Just one more statement about that sort of, because we had to make a decision because per town council, originally, we wanted to actually solicit both an ownership model and a lease model. And the problem is if you go an ownership model, it's essentially, you have to build it if you, if you get the bid. And so it didn't allow us to go one way or the other, so we had to really progress. And I think the selectmen were pretty clear that they prefer the lease model. And the numbers are better.
I, I prefer the one with the biggest return.
Yeah, the numbers are better.
Whether it's leased or not.
I have to say, I'm probably leaning Carrie's way in not wanting to cut down trees for this.
I mean, I think we can, we can move forward with the things we agree on.
Yeah.
So we can get started on this. And part of that, I mean, the negotiating part is gonna take some time, and we've got, we're gonna have to get started if we're gonna ever finish it. And we can, you know, we can say, let's go with the, with the canopies and start with that, and we'll see how things go from there.
Okay, and I think I've stated my opinion before, I'm, I'm not, I, I, would require me quite a bit more reassuring to think that between Spalding and the school is a good idea, and between the two twenty-five and the DPW is a good idea. I think, you know, I don't like to cut down trees, but to me, it's even more about the people who have to look at it every single day. And, you know, we're making decisions that are impacting them.
I'm not worried about cutting down the tree, every time we build a house, we cut down more trees than we're talking about here.
And, and, and trees can go back, but I think, you know, solar panels are just gonna be there for twenty years, we hope. So, I'm not saying I would never think that that was a good idea, but I, you know, I kind of, you know, really agree with what you said, is it Eric?
Yeah.
Let, let's make sure that everybody loves what we do so that when we do go back for another one, they say, yes, we, you know, they know how to do it and they know how to do it well. I am, I am super in favor of the canopy at the school, I think that's perfect. Of course, I don't get to decide that, they do.
Yeah.
But I, I, I think that that's, if it works for them and it doesn't, you know, I'm a little worried about the one up by the buses just because it's kind of tight up there and I don't want to disrupt the bus flow. Never mind, it's town meeting parking, but I think, you know, that, that bus flow, I wouldn't, you know, but certainly down where the, the cars are, I'm a hundred percent in favor of that. And if there's a way to make it work for DPW that Gary's happy with, you know, I don't want Gary not, you know, I don't want it to work for the residents and I don't want it to not work for Gary.
Gary gets his feelings paved.
And, you know, so I would be in favor of somehow moving forward with those two in a way that we're not just saying, yes, go do it no matter what it looks like, right? That we, we still control that, and, and then we can go back to them. But then, you know, then there's Carrie's issue about, you know, which vendor, because you were saying that you, you weren't gonna, you weren't gonna support the vendor.
Well, yeah, my only, in that regard, in terms of the recommendations that you have, which I think are very sound, on, on, on the third recommendation, if negotiations with Amoresco do not progress satisfactorily, you said enter into discussions with Veragey. And I would say, reevaluate where you are and consider Sunbug because I believe they did come back and say, we'll do, we'll give you a canopy proposal for the DPW as well. I saw an addendum to their original, right, so they would do that.
So they're, they're out for, they're out for tree cutting but not for canopies?
Correct.
At both sites?
So I think all we're asking for now is, if you went for Amoresco, we would come back to you, we wouldn't go, we simplified it, so we're just asking for one company to start, we would come back if that didn't work out.
Sunbug either met or exceeded every one of your qualifications.
Except for their age of the company. Do we know who did the Walden?
I don't.
I, I just want to point out to Nathan, Nathan, something like this would not interfere with the bus, buses because these are interior, whereas here, you know, you would imagine they have to go around.
I agree, doing something at the school without interfering with the buses is doable. It's just engineering and it's just structural steel.
Yeah, I'm just saying, this, this wouldn't interfere, this, this I could see could.
I will say about that, so I walked that site, it, the posts are like eighty feet by forty-foot spacing, so it's not...
You went to the, this one?
Yes.
Yeah, well, but I'm just saying, if you don't have to turn around the post because it's in the corner, it's a little bit like table legs at Thanksgiving, you know?
I think we're all done with public input. No, not you, you're on me, I was responding.
Carrie, one, one comment I make on your, you know, request to evaluate Amoresco versus Sunbug versus Veragey is you're really not talking to this group. You're talking, you need to make that clear to the group that you make to do the negotiations. Because we're not, I would hope Bob would be part of one of those persons from the Energy Task Force, but you got a whole bunch of different people.
I mean, we're not just creating a group of you.
We're not.
You can put us on it if you want to, but...
Yes, we're looking at different aspects of the town to be involved in this next phase.
You already know all this stuff.
Get the different viewpoints.
Have the learning curve.
Okay, so I think...
You're dying to be on it, right?
All right, so let's, let's go to number two, and let's go ahead and, well, is there a general thought that we would go forward with canopies?
Do we need a motion?
Well, I just want to get the general feel first, and we're fine with Amoresco?
Yeah, start.
Kind of that, to start, and, and I would agree with you, I would go to Sunbug as the next one.
Financially, the most advantageous proposal.
Okay, and then, so, okay, so we'll get back and vote, but, so there's, there's two of those in, in number one, and then for number two, which for everybody is the, the makeup, the working group. So this would be creating a new group that would be school committee, BOS, energy, town council, FinCom. Can town council be on a board, or are they just somebody that we reference?
They'd be more advisory.
Yeah, I'm not sure that they can actually sit on a committee.
Right.
And how, and so you had seven here, that's the number you were looking for?
Not necessarily, we were just putting out potential people who would be, who would help.
Move it forward, yeah.
If there's not any ground mount, only canopy, probably Conscom would not need to be involved.
Okay. All right, so we're talking school committee, FinCom.
That's right.
I would, I would put in there, well, I don't know, I was gonna say facilities, but it doesn't really... I, I guess I would do facilities just because it might impact flow and things, but I don't know. And maybe there's something on the building.
And facilities could be helpful on it, I think.
Okay, so we have Board of Selectmen, facilities.
Well, that's the other member at description, the BOS would be the facilities then, right?
Yes.
Sorry, what's that?
The final one.
Yeah, well, I'm, I've been crossing them out left and right here. So we would have somebody from the BOS, somebody from the facilities, somebody from FinCom, somebody from the school committee, which leaves three of you.
Actually, we don't need Conscom.
This is on this list.
Tim would be in charge of, as a project, as a grant.
You're directing me to form this work.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so then Tim, and then two of you, then we have seven.
I'd recommend strongly, I'm gonna recommend Bob be part of it because he's, he's developed our school souls. He's the technical expert. And what, are you looking for somebody else? Do you want to volunteer, or shall I? Doesn't have to be seven. I'll volunteer.
All right.
Unless you really want it.
Okay, and then I guess we have to put something out to ask the other ones.
You would do that.
Okay. Okay. So is there a motion to, I'm gonna start with number, oh wait, it's number three here, the town. So what do you mean we're selecting, so we have to do that in order for you to do number one, the...
Well, I, I kind of, well, A, deciding what properties formally. B, deciding to form a work group to negotiate, and three, just selecting a vendor to start negotiating with.
Let me start with vendors.
More vague and say that, and two, that the town administration is directed to form the working group, which then would, would, would do this, why would, why do we need to specify Amoresco?
But we, we have to select the vendor, that's our responsibility.
Okay, all right.
As, as I understand it.
Right.
Right.
We can't.
Yeah.
We have to do that one.
Okay, so just leave it, and then we leave it as it is.
All right, so
Each of the two projects.
So we're talking about B and D?
B and D, yes.
B and D.
So is there a motion to proceed, for the town of Carlisle to proceed with a negotiation of a lease and pilot agreement with qualified developer who has responded to RFP eighteen dash one at each of two locations? B, the solar photovoltaic facility overlay district, a canopy mount, solar photovoltaic system, and D, a parking, at the parking lots near the Carlisle schools, a canopy mount, solar photovoltaic.
I shall move.
I, I would say, if I could just amend this, the parking lots at the school.
Yes, yes.
Well, well, at the street. At or near the school. Near.
Leave it near.
Cause Spalding may be included. Spalding may be included on the negotiations, there was a reason.
Oh, down, down along the parking, down there?
Yeah.
You know, if it can be protected from fly balls and things like that.
Second.
It's the same lot, actually.
Okay, so you first did it, first did it, is that a word?
I first did it, yes.
I seconded it.
You seconded it. All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous? Okay, and then
You better do this one, because I lost.
Okay, the, the board of selectmen to direct the, for the town administrators directed to form a working group with a membership as designated by the board of selectmen to negotiate a lease and pilot for the approved projects, the working group will return to the board of selectmen for final approval with the final photovoltaic system layout, site renderings, updated financial projects and feedback from town boards. For all appro, for both approved locations, the, I don't know what SWG is, the
Solar Working Group.
The solar working group suggests the following members for the working group, a board of selectmen member, a facilities committee member, a FinCom member, a school committee member, Tim himself, and Bob, and John?
Jonathan.
Jonathan.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous? And then the town of Carlisle selects Amaresco as a solar developer. RFP eighteen dash one responded to negotiate with the solar photovoltaic facility overlay dis to negotiate for the photovoltaic project as approved in number one, and for the, as approved for number one. And for the Carlisle school, if a project is approved, if their project is approved for number one.
So moved.
And this binds us how, Tim?
We merely, we merely select the vendor.
You select the preferred vendor to negotiate with. If at any point, you know, it breaks down, you can go to your number two.
So it's an R.
Yeah, so I would add
There is no requirement, to select, to enter into a contract.
You bounce and negotiate in good faith, but if you can't reach agreement.
Okay, great, all right. So that was the motion?
I'll, I'll make that motion. So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Are you, you're, you seem hesitant.
Yeah, well, I'm just, was wondering if we, okay, I guess we discussed that, fine.
You, you were wondering if we have them do it.
Yeah.
I think that we've already had a committee do it, we just need to trust them.
Okay.
Okay, so it's first and second, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I never see you in
Sorry, we made you even later.
Oh, yes, we will. Oh, yes, we will.
Nathan?
Yes?
Just for clarification, you're talking about a working group to undertake this negotiation process?
Yes, we're asking, we're asking him to put the working group together, and we suggested membership.
Right, so they will undertake negotiations?
Yes. And the final planning and all that. That's my understanding.
Right.
Whatever comes back, whatever.
Board asked us to
Okay, so we're gonna move on if you, excuse me, we're gonna move on if you could step out. Helen, I'm sorry, if you wouldn't mind just stepping out? Sorry to call you out.
But Helen's was the name that we could come up with.
My mic isn't on, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, now at eight o'clock.
Yeah, well
Okay, I just wanna point out that even Bob left us. I, yes, I, yes, I noticed that you're here, but
We wore him out, we wore him out, he's a replacement.
Both Nathan and I are on California time, so it doesn't bother us any.
Except I have not slept since yesterday.
Yes, that's okay.
Okay, so the topic now is another meaty one, it's gonna be a long night. So this is the discussion about housing authority appointments, which we need to do. And, and that kind of brings about a discussion about the roles of the housing authority and the housing trust. And, and kind of what roles and responsibilities are going forward. So first, I just wanna start with what was in your packet, I think was the most, was the final version. But was a, a, a letter, I guess, memo, a letter from Tom, Tom Harrington, our town council, about the the difference between the housing authority and the housing trust and what their roles are. And I think that, you know, soon you all read it, but I think it kind of boils down to that last paragraph, I think. Well, obviously, cause it's a summary paragraph. Sorry, I'm tired. But basically where he says that, you know, broadly, there appears to be nothing, the authority previously did that Carlisle cannot, in Carlisle, that cannot be done by the trust. And I think that the, the, the real bottom line there is that what really distinguishes the housing authority is they're responsible for managing town-owned units. And we don't currently have any town-owned units. And so having read this and thought about this quite a bit, I wanted to make a proposal, and I'm just gonna read it so that I don't
Okay.
mess up. And so I am, I am gonna read it, but
Okay.
Don't look at this for its grammar or its form. They're truly just notes.
Wait, I'm not supposed to correct the apostrophes?
Yeah, no. Please don't, and I don't have one for you yet. Oh, no, I do. So, so what I'd like to do tonight is to propose a strategy for how we approach the Carlisle Housing Authority, the appointments to that group, and the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust going forward. Again, this is just my proposal, I'm not speaking for the board. So as everyone's aware, the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust, and kind of by extension, the Carlisle Board of Selectmen, and the Carlisle Housing Authority have been struggling to work collaboratively together towards providing affordable housing solutions in Carlisle for many years. It's my belief that when you have two groups with similar responsibilities, conflict is likely, and certainly inefficiencies are certain. I've been on the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust for four and a half years, and I know that the group strongly has desired to work collaboratively with everybody. And, you know, we really look forward this summer to engaging in, in a dialogue and, and how we could improve our relationship going forward. But the conflict that we've had just kind of brought progress to a standstill. With the last project that the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust proposed, and it was long before I think any of us were on it, so we don't take credit for it. But was the, the Goff property, which was completed in 2015. So as I stated at the last town meeting, you know, the, the board of selectmen and the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust really strongly desired to attend mediation sessions with the housing authority, with the goal of improving that working relationship. But unfortunately, the entire housing authority decided to resign because town meeting didn't support the request for a housing coordinator role. So with that as a background, I think that it's extremely unfortunate that they decided to do that. But it also, I think, presents a unique opportunity for us to think outside the box for how we address affordable housing issues in Carlisle. You know, what I'm gonna propose is just one option, I'm not saying this is, you know, must do this, but I believe that it's an appropriate course of action. So as I already mentioned, to have good background information, I asked town council to look closely at the roles of both the housing authority and the housing trust. Because I wanted it clearly outlined where the responsibilities overlapped and where they were unique to one group, because there was always a lot of discussion about that. In his report, which we just, which you all have, he states that the groups have the same responsibilities with one exception. The housing authority is responsible for manage, managing town-owned affordable units, we don't have any. So because of the significant overlap in responsibilities and the lack of town-owned affordable housing units, I propose that we combine the Affordable Housing Trust and the housing authority into one group. And that we do this by, one, moving the existing housing authority responsibilities to the housing trust, that's the two leases that we have. Two, the, the housing authority is officially dissolved. And three, we increase the size and the makeup of the trust to make up for the loss of some resources who are looking into this. So I would propose that step one, and just to go into more detail, we appoint members to the housing authority who would be open to evaluating this proposal and other proposals, but as a possible course of action. If they find it would be appropriate, they would transfer ownership of the two leases the housing authority currently manages to the trust. They would declare that the housing authority is no longer needed and vote to disband. At the spring town meeting, they would request the town to vote to disband the housing authority. And then if that is successful, they would send the vote to the state for, for approval. Step two of what I'm proposing would be that, to offset the loss of the housing authority by adding resources to the housing trust and adjusting the housing trust membership mix to eliminate the majority influence of the board of selectmen. So towards that end, I would propose that if the housing authority is disbanded, we would change the trust's membership from seven to nine with three-year terms. And we would cha, change the makeup of the trust to be four board of selectmen to eliminate the majority of the board. And I would say that, you know, due to the perceived influence of the chair, it would be the chair who would not serve on the housing trust, that's just my proposal. That we would then add one planning board member, one resident from one of the currently, one of the current affordable housing facilities, just, you know, making sure we have one person, even though we don't own them. And three citizens at large with an interest in affordable housing. So it would be four board of selectmen and five non-board of selectmen members. And then step three, once the leases are transferred, but before new projects are considered, I believe that a review of the Benfield project is in order. So I think it's critical that we learn what went well and what didn't, so that we can make future projects even better than projects we've already done. I think that the scope would be a joint effort of the trust and the board of selectmen. And I also think that even if the housing authority does not vote to disband, I think we need to do this review and that we would need to, we should request that the housing authority does such a review of Benfield.
I like the rest of that sentence, though.
Okay.
Keep on reading.
Okay, I'll, I'll read it. Okay, if the CHA is not disbanded, I believe that the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust and the board of selectmen should request the new housing authority to conduct such a review as a requirement to the funding of any new projects. The scope of the review to be worked out jointly between the housing authority, housing trust, and the BOS. So what I'm saying there is, we're gonna request them to do that, but we're not gonna fund any more projects unless it gets done. Step four, work with the master planning committee to determine a mechanism to really formalize the inclusion of housing needs as part of the master plan. I know they're doing it, but, you know, in, in concert with that request, request that the housing trust, I'm sorry, let me just read it word for word here. Work with the master planning committee to determine a mechanism to formalize the inclusion of the housing needs as part of the master plan, and in concert with that, request that the housing trust create a plan based on priorities identified in the master plan. So in summary, I do, I don't believe that Carlisle needs both a housing authority and a housing trust. Therefore, I think that we should absorb the functions of the authority into the trust, increase the size of the trust, and change its makeup to ensure that they are actively engaged in the planning process. To me, this represents a much more efficient use of Carlisle's volunteer efforts and at no cost to the affordable housing efforts in Carlisle. If the rest of the board is, is in agreement, I would propose that we create a subcommittee to flesh this out further, cause it's just my thoughts. And I'm sure you all have things, ways that you want to alter.
I move we create a subcommittee of the board of selectmen to review the recommendations of the chair and come back with further recommendations.
What would this committee be?
I, I just was wondering if it should just be a, a subcommittee of the, of only the selectmen?
Well, no, so thinking that this might happen, you may recall in the last Affordable Housing Trust, you know, we did discuss the possibility of a working group to figure out appointments and, and how we deal with this going forward.
Yeah.
Wanting, it, it's kind of really, really weird, because so many of us on the board of selectmen are the trust, and there aren't currently any members who are not on, who are on the trust, who aren't on the board of selectmen. But in his role as trust, Kerry agreed, and the trust voted, that if we were to create this committee, he would be the trust liaison, I guess, or trust appointee. But what, you know, I think, who else might we want to have on it? So we have trust? Or is it just the housing trust and the board of selectmen?
Me, myself, and I.
Right, exactly. I'll appoint you and you appoint me.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering if we are putting the cart before the horse here, you know, before we have, I, do we wanna talk about whether we wanna do, you know, step one, two, and three first?
I'm not sure these are, are these sequential?
Yeah, if, if one doesn't happen, then two doesn't happen. But I don't think that the, the, the
I mean, what do we
But, but my summary kind of jumped all the way back up to the beginning, where I, I think that we need a subgroup to kind of flush this out, so that it's not just a Nathan Brown thing. So I would recommend that it be somebody from the trust, somebody from the board of selectmen, and, and a citizen at large. Who has an interest in housing. I don't think it needs to be more than three people, right, we're not
Okay.
And specifically, the, the work product would be
Specifically, the work product would be
A recommendation.
A, a, a recommendation and for who we should appoint. And a path, and a potential path forward, if who is appointed chooses to go that path.
Yeah.
Right. Once, you know, I mean, they're, they're appointed. What they want. So I'll let you guys all mull it over.
I'm sure I understand.
It didn't occur to me until just now, Nathan, but the housing authority were all elected positions. And so the control of the housing authority was by a And so the control of the Housing Authority was by a group that were elected specifically for that purpose. We're saying that the purpose of the Housing Trust is fundamentally the same as that purpose, because we don't have those town-owned facilities to manage. So it's the same purpose, but we are no longer giving the town the ability to have control of that body voted, as voted positions. If we go back to four selectmen rather than five. I don't know, I mean, I don't know if that's significant, but it certainly was significant that the Housing Authority was a voted, were all voted into their positions. I don't, what we give up by not having control of folks that were voted into their positions by the town, we give up that.
So you're wondering whether or not the Board of Selectmen should maintain control?
Yeah, maintain control, basically, yeah, maintain control.
Because we're elected.
Because we're elected. I'm not, I mean, I'm not a control freak, as I think you know, but I just, I, it was done for, it's there for a purpose.
So I think that the Housing Authority's primary responsibility, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, is they're elected and their primary responsibility is hiring somebody who, an executive director of the Housing Authority, right?
Which at some point we.
Might need to get.
Might need to be able to do, someone might be able to do that.
Some point we may say, let's create a Housing Authority. I just don't see that anywhere near.
Or have town-owned housing.
Right.
We had town-owned housing before we had a Housing Authority. So it wasn't necessary to have village court for those five years that village court was there without a Housing Authority. So, but I, it's the only, it's the only question. The other question is, part of the master planning process should be an update of the housing production plan specifically, rather than just a plan. I think it's due to be updated.
Yeah, we, I brought it up at the last planning board meeting. I did tell, I kind of gave them a heads up that we'll be looking for something strong in the master plan.
So, they're baking that into the process, right, as part of, both the open space and recreation plan and the housing production plans will be updated as part of the planning process.
Right, and so I think my point in here was just making sure that the Housing Trust is a part of that, a solid part of that process, because it's, that component of it is kind of our document.
Right, right.
And I guess I don't see that if you didn't have five selectmen on the trust, why you couldn't still have, hire, why the selectmen couldn't hire a housing, a member of the council. I don't think that you, I think it's important, in fact, more important not to have all five of the, on the, on the trust. If for no other reason than for optics, because it, then, I mean, it creates sort of the problem that we have here, you know, the me, myself, and I type of thing. Why, why do we bother having a trust then? Let me think, so.
Right, it was an awkward meeting.
It was, it was awkward meeting tonight. It was awkward meeting the last time, too, you know. Because we were talking to ourselves.
Right, now, I don't honestly, I do not know the history of why it was five selectmen and two non-selectmen.
It doesn't have to be, and other towns don't have it.
Yeah, other towns don't have it that way.
And I, too, was just trying to address the.
If they don't have it, they may have a Housing Authority, you know, to counter, I don't know.
Yeah, so I think.
Well, it could also, again, you know, be re-trust. If we were to then reinstate a house, new Housing Authority, then we revisit the composition of the trust. I mean, you know.
Right, right.
I was just, I really was trying to deal with the optics of it, but I was also trying to ensure that we had, you know, more people on the trust and, and active involvement in affordable housing. Not that we aren't, but we're the Board of Selectmen and, you know, so I was trying to get a higher mix of not in, in that energy towards the affordable.
I agree with your thinking on that. I just raised the issue because I don't know the answer to it, if there is an answer officially.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's critical that the Board of Selectmen have a majority on it.
I agree. Because the Board of Selectmen still have their authority.
Less workload, Nathan.
No, 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 it's, no, it's just that the selectmen still have their authority. Because, you know, there might be a time where the trust has to come to the selectman for something. And so if we're coming, we just don't wanna be coming to ourselves for things that's stupid.
Okay, and what about, what about going to nine? I mean, obviously, this working group could tweak this, but what about the concept of increasing the size?
Yeah, I mean, it could be seven with three, three Board of Selectmen instead of four.
Mm-hmm, and the reason why I was thinking nine was we are losing, we're losing town volunteers who are interested in affordable housing. And so I was trying to beef this up a little bit to, to reduce the loss of resources to think about. And if that doesn't, you know, that was just telling you why I thought of it.
Makes sense.
All right, so then it gets back to this working group so that we can move forward.
Yes, that's fine.
I would recommend it's one selectman member, a Housing Trust member, and at least one citizen at large, but I think three people is probably a good number.
Yeah.
And I think this would be an open meeting.
It is, if it's our working group, it is definitely an open meeting situation.
This is an official, must be sworn into type of group, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I just wanna be clear that.
As opposed to the last working group we just set up, which is a staff, the staff.
Right. Just wanna be clear, this is, these will be public meetings. Did you wanna say something?
I just wanted to remind you that the ground leases cannot be transferred until you have a Housing Authority.
We don't, we understand. That was part of this.
So if you did something where you appointed the three people, you can appoint sooner rather than later, and they would transfer the ground lease, you could get moving a lot faster.
Yes, and that's, you don't have the benefit of having this here. I was not reading it word for word. It does say in here in step two that they need to transfer the leases. It's after we appoint them.
Have them first.
Yes.
So would you reconsider being appointed to the Housing Authority if we were to do, would you put your hat, your name in the?
I think I brought George to do that. You know, my feeling on it, that I prefer to be on the trust.
Okay, just say, because this was, this is a little different conversation, it's a little different authority than what you might have envisioned.
This would be an interim position that would go away.
That you would vote yourself out of.
And then you would morph.
Possibly, because you, because you would be one member of a board that may or may not decide.
If this is just what we're gonna be, you know.
You know, we cannot dissolve the Housing Authority. Yeah, we, all we can do is kind of set it in motion.
That's fine, I'll do whatever.
Okay, so, so this, this group would get, get the appointment recommendations. I've been getting some. I think everybody here is, they, you know, they would all go to this group. This group would talk through them, talk to them, and then present to the Board of Selectmen, hopefully soon, who would, we would be appointing to the Housing Authority.
You would be the trust member. Do I, who would want to be the other?
I'll.
I shouldn't be, because I'm the chair of the trust, so.
I, I proposed it.
Yeah, why don't you do it?
So, it's out of you.
You know what you wrote.
Asked to be me. And then we need one.
So this, this is, you were asking me to do the temporary thing that?
No, I'm asking you if you would like to, well, I, my question to you was, would you like this new working group to consider you?
Yes, the working group, but not the Housing Authority.
Oh, so she would actually, so I guess she's volunteering to be on the working group.
And then go from there.
Okay, so would you mind just sending a letter, an email to Tim expressing your interest?
Sure.
We just need to have that for paperwork.
I'd be glad to, but I brought George here for the Housing Authority.
Housing Authority.
Well, I mean, for me, Housing Authority, Housing Trust committees, whatever, I'm just interested in the whole concept. I have a lot of thoughts, but I'd like to hear other people before I speak.
Okay, so if you would send an email.
Well, I did, I sent a letter.
I think I saw it, yes, yep, I think, yep. All right. Okay, anything else about this topic?
I think we.
So I, I propose that we create, well, actually, we're gonna have to appoint people in the next meeting, right? Or can we just go ahead and appoint even though we don't have a letter?
Give me a piece of paper.
Contention to bond receipt of the letter.
Well, we have verbal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're all witnesses of verbal.
Right, okay. Somebody wanna make a motion?
So I move that we create a working group. Let's see where it is. To, to develop a proposal that's outlined in this memo. And to work to find people who can, that the selectmen can appoint to the Housing Authority in either late this fall or early winter. I propose that this working group be composed of Carrie Kissinger as the trust member, Nathan Brown as the Board of Selectmen member, and Maureen Deary Cosgrove. Cosgrove, Deary, I don't remember how, sorry, I screwed it up, as the member at large.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
You're welcome. This went very well. No, it's gonna be a public meeting, right, so that.
There will be public meetings within it, yep. Everybody is welcome.
So George is gonna give us. In your meetings, okay.
I'm gonna hand it over to you from here on.
It's my cemetery.
It's your meeting.
I think we got some cemetery deeds in your.
Yep.
I'll move it real fast, how's that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Originally, there was three in the electronic package that another one came in today, so.
Okay, do I have to stay here for you to approve extending the exhibition or not?
I was gonna bring that up.
The administrators.
Let's just, okay.
Thank you.
Want to take it out of order?
Just take it out of order, you know we did it.
I'm so sorry.
Could you just repeat your request briefly and avoid, keep the display up until Sunday?
Can you, can you keep the display up until, can I keep the display up till Sunday? And then move the display for two weeks to the, the Green Cemetery to be planted, so the poppies will be planted on the graves of those that fought.
So is there a, can I have a motion to allow the poppy exhibit, display, to remain in the town center?
Sunday the 18th.
Until Sunday, November 18th, and to then to be moved to Green Cemetery, to the graves of people who fought in World War I for a period of two weeks after.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, it's a beautiful display, absolutely amazing.
All of it.
Yeah, and it was a great community event and effort.
Fantastic, yeah, I mean, he's been fantastic for me, just, I mean, he's been fantastic.
We don't.
All right, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Alan and Deborah Dewey. Thirty-six South Street at Green Cemetery, Lot D 201, Graves 1, 2, and 3.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Robert and Phyllis Clark, 174 Robbins Drive at Green Cemetery, Lot D 109, Graves 1 and 2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to William and Beverly Barton, 131 Woodridge Road at Green Cemetery, Lot D 115, Graves 1 and 2.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
And I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Stephen and Elizabeth Luttrell, Lot 5 Woodridge Road at Green Cemetery, Lot D 109, Graves 1 and 2.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, can I just ask a quick question of everybody, just in the, in trying to reduce paper usage? If we have this written like this as motions, do we feel we need to get copies of the actual certificates?
That's a very good question, and I would say.
I don't feel you need to copy them. Yes, thank you for providing them, but this is, this is the important stuff.
I'll save even more paper in my packet because there aren't any.
Okay.
Okay.
It's your meeting, Tim.
Okay, we're not gonna act on the appointments of Board of Health tonight. At one point, we thought the Board of Health was going to interview a candidate tonight, and they might be able to come to the meeting to present that candidate for a joint appointment, but we'll have to do that next time.
They saw how late we were going and decided.
But they do have a candidate.
They always were a smart group.
To replace Alan on the Board of Health. So we can move the Town Administrator's report. One other item that's not in it this week is that at long last, the state has approved the transfer of the package store license at Fern's Cafes.
Thank goodness, I was wondering.
Jen has the license, give it a sign before you leave tonight. So we'll do the license transfer, and they'll hold that until you do your renewals in December, but, you know, they'll be in the south during the holiday season now.
Yeah.
So moving on, there are two more letters in your package from the Municipal Facilities Committee, and Kate might be able to speak to.
Yeah, since I wrote both of them.
To what? Well, they, they wanna know a couple of things. They wanna know if, how the selectmen feel about a single fueling facility in town versus the two that we've currently had, having redundant fueling facilities. As you know, the one fire station is gonna, is coming out of commission in January of next year. And everyone's gonna be fueling up at DPW for the foreseeable future.
They've been doing that now.
Yes, yes, because they're running on the fuel. And then also, with the Board of Instructs departments that are currently storing records or equipment at DPW, if they can get their stuff out of there, so that the DPW could actually have use of their own facilities. And some of that is already happening, as you know, the C O is moving the, the.
They've already moved.
Equipment to high end and, and they're finding homes. I don't know, Kate, if you wanted to add to that, but that, that's what the Facilities Committee wanted to ask the Board.
I'm happy to answer any questions. I think the most important of the two memos is the one about the fuel, the secondary fueling station. Currently, we have one at the DPW, which is above ground, and it's to code, and everybody's been using it. And we've had two, and possibly because it was a backup, possibly because we just always have, possibly because it's maybe a little more convenient for the fire department to have this, you know, there. But now that it's no longer there, you know, is it worth $100,000 to have a backup fueling station?
A quarter of a mile.
A quarter of a mile away.
No, it's not.
And because, and we did look at other alternatives. One would be a fuel service that comes to the police department, or rather, the fire department if they, you know, really didn't wanna go to the DPW. But as far as we understand, there's no real problems with people going to the DPW because they're big enough and have enough maneuvering room for the big trucks to get in there.
Plenty of room there.
So if I, if I reword what I think I'm seeing in this letter, the Municipal Facilities Committee is asking us to, because we have to do something with the tank at the fire department, right?
It has to come out, no matter what.
We remove the tank at the fire department and then figure out what we wanna do. We have another tank, let's see how well that goes. If in the future, we feel that we need to do something, we could, but let's not jump into it right now.
Yes, and there's a lot of reasons for not jumping into it on that side, because we're gonna have a new fire chief. Maybe he wants it above ground, maybe he wants it below ground, because he doesn't want it above ground. We don't wanna make that decision at this point for this newly hired person. And we also do think that maybe there are other better ways to spend that money.
$200,000.
And, you know, the Chief Fisher was very interested in having it below ground, which is much more expensive than above ground. And, you know, the Chief Fisher was very interested in having it below ground, which is much more expensive than above ground, anyway.
Right, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't, you know, that, that money was already appropriated, right, as?
No.
No.
Okay.
To close the.
The, well, the money.
Money to close.
To, to take out the old tanks.
Yeah.
Has been appropriated and spent, plus some, um, but, but.
So, the tanks are gone now?
No, but we're, we're, we're working on it.
So, what you're saying is we wouldn't spend that part of the money that was to put new tanks in?
There was no money allocated for putting new tanks in.
Does it?
We'd have to allocate new money for that.
We got it, we got a grant, we got a grant approved.
Was it approved?
The state level. It's been approved, but it.
Hasn't been funded, though.
But it hasn't been funded.
Oh, okay.
Right. Two hundred thousand dollars for new.
Probably the police department and the fire department. The thing is, is this a lot, is this a really a must-have, or is it kinda, is it like to have? It'd like to have.
And I probably wouldn't suggest it, but of course, they could drive an extra mile and a half to the diesel fuel station, right, right on the town line.
Yeah, so, I think.
Probably for less money.
I think it makes complete sense if, if the only thing that is budgeted already is the removal of the tanks. I thought it was the removal, and I thought it was to do everything, but if the only thing that is budgeted is to remove the tanks, then that's what we do now, and we figure out what to do in the future.
Right.
I, I think at the very least, we need to have some time. I'd rather not rush into putting new tanks in, because we don't know, do we wanna put, you know, a trailer in that spot, you know?
And it solves what has to happen by January first.
Yes.
Uh, well, the removal has to happen by January first, which we have budgeted.
But if there's no new tank to put in there, I mean, the question is what happens after January first?
They go to the, yeah.
When they, when they run out of gas? Okay, the answer is they can go to the DPW and get, get more.
Yeah, they're already doing that now, because they're, yeah, they're out of fuel over here, yeah.
So, what action are we taking?
You would want to make a policy or, I don't, either it's a, I'm not sure if it's a policy, or, uh, just a kind of a.
Provide direction?
Provide direction to the Municipal Facilities, because they didn't wanna make that decision and make you mad at them.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, I think it makes sense for the.
If everybody's gonna be bad at the, at the selectmen.
I think that it makes sense for the facilities to move, to move forward with the project as it was currently defined, which was to get rid of the current tanks, and we'll figure out the rest later, uh, with, with their recommendation.
Okay.
And if the state comes up with two hundred thousand, then we.
I don't think that's something we have to vote on.
That some thought has been given to this.
Yes, yeah. We concur.
I don't think we need to vote on it, but does everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the other one was, uh, probably does need a directive to all the town boards and, and offices or whatever, to please inventory and, and remove whatever is being stored. Or, I don't know how to.
We can, yeah, we can set something out on that, a memo.
DPW, and that in future, um, you know, we would require that they need to provide their own storage.
I, 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 is there a motion to ask Tim to, or do we even need to do that? Tim, can you just do that?
I can just do that, if that's the board's, yeah, consensus. Yeah, all right.
We just wanted to incentivize, not, you know.
Yep.
Okay, great.
I'll move on to number two, we have a letter in the packet from Governor Baker, and I'll say an additional fifty thousand dollars in chapter ninety-eight for this fiscal year. Um, bringing the total to just over three hundred thousand for the year. Uh, obviously, that wasn't programmed into Gary's, uh, plans for the year, the Finance Committee is suggesting potentially using that as the, the design funds for the complete streets funding, should we be awarded a grant. As you know, that's for construction only, and there's still a, a missing piece of design, about forty-five or fifty thousand dollars worth of design that needed to be funded. They would rather use funds of this nature than to, uh, ask Gary to find it in the, the Highway Department budget or somewhere else. Because, of course, you know.
Just a little windfall to.
Yeah, it's convenient, convenient.
When we needed it.
Amount.
Yeah.
And also attached to my report, there's a revised, proposed revised mission statement from the Energy Task Force. They'd like to come in and discuss with the board at a future meeting, so I included it for your information tonight. And additionally, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. Oh, yes, yeah.
One comment, I think the, uh, mission statement they proposed basically is twofold, it's lower energy use and expand the use of, of renewable energy. There's one sort of thing I think it might be worth considering for the first item on this mission statement would be to establish a baseline measurement of the town's current level of greenhouse gas emissions, against which progress can be measured and reported on an ongoing basis on the town website.
Yes, good point.
Without a, without being able to measure it, you know, it's just.
And they, and they are, they are already doing that to some degree, they haven't, not, it didn't include residences, I think, but it certainly, all the particular stuff, and some, some, all the municipal facilities are included.
Yeah, so it would be good to have that on, I totally agree with you.
And that baseline goes back to like nineteen ninety or so.
Ah, good.
Yeah, and so I think, you know, point that out, publish it so that we can all see it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Well, I, I just wanna add one other thing. I, I think the Energy Task Force is gonna need some help, some, um, administrative help, let's say. They, they had the grant writer at one point, um, they, they have some big projects, they've gotten lots of grants, now they, now they need to manage them. I think we need to, when we're doing this, also need to think about how we can help them, because I, I, I under, you know, I realize it's a budget line, but savings don't get reflected in budgeted, in budgets, and sometimes you need to spend money to save money.
And they, and they have saved us a ton of money.
Yeah.
And so, I, I would be, I, I would be in favor of doing that, and, you know, and I brought this up several years in a row, particularly back when, you know, there, there was the request to, um, fund, you know, the, uh, the energy, the grant writer. I forget what the title was.
I don't know what the title was.
Yeah, but I, I think that what, you know, before, I would support something like that, I think we need to figure out, how are we really measuring the savings? Um, because what, what happens to date is there's savings, but that just means that the departments have more money to spend, and we have to stop that.
Yeah, well.
And so, like, because we can fund this person with, with those savings, and if, if that's the case, then I'm totally in favor of it.
Yes, okay, I, I agree with you.
If we're hiring somebody and that's just adding.
No, no, I, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Exactly, that it is.
If we save money, something has to come out of the budget.
Right, right.
And they are also gathering those data, and, and will have them available for us, uh, including, because they know how much they've saved over the last several years.
But what, yeah, and, and I know they do, but the problem is, is as a town, we actually haven't saved that money. The budgets haven't come down, we have to figure out how we do that.
Yes, correct, right, yep.
The, the real savings.
Yes, yes.
The transfer of money from one pocket to the other, so we can pay for this, and not the taxpayers' pocket.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And, and I'm just trying to say, one other thing.
Go ahead.
Is that, you know, we are looking for like a part-time facilities manager, and I'm wondering if that, if we should, and we're having trouble finding a part-time, and, and I'm wondering if that could be, that sort of thing could be added to the facilities manager's, um, job description, so that we, you know, are not hiring a whole bunch of.
Closer to full-time.
Yeah, closer to full-time, help us with that, and also not having a bunch of different people doing the same job.
Mm-hmm. I think that's a, I think that's a good idea. I don't know how we get there, though, I think it starts with how can we, how can we actually, uh, realize the savings?
Yep.
Well, that's an accounting issue.
Okay, so we'll, we'll.
Money we're not spending on.
We'll, we'll talk to them more about this, right, so.
Yes, we're gonna have them in the talk.
Future.
Yeah.
Okay, yep. Also, item number four, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee is requesting, uh, of the board, that you approve a stop sign at Martin Street, at Curve Street, some of the residents.
That one with the little island in the middle?
It's, it's, uh, it's just a really wide kind of opening, there's not, there's not a raised island. I tried to take some pictures, they came out pretty dark and awful.
Those pictures that?
Yeah.
I was wondering what that was.
If you wanted to, uh, hold off on it and take a right bite, and we could do it next time.
There's Tim's car back there.
Yeah, that's right, that's the only way you know.
Okay.
But you can't really tell.
Martin is the one that's on, uh, the lap, uh, it's.
Just past the bog, if you were heading toward, uh.
G twenty-five.
Uh, no, the other way, yeah. You drove past the, the bog house and then the bog.
So, they want the stop sign on Martin?
On Martin Street.
There's no stop sign there.
That's correct.
Is it a T intersection?
Yes, and there's a stop sign, right.
Well, I mean, it's, um, well, there is, there should, by state law.
There's nothing at all, yeah.
The Martin Street already has one, because when you come to a T, you have to buy that, that ends into the, the thing. Has to stop, but if they want to put the belt on with the suspenders, I have no problem with it.
Is there a motion to approve the installation of a stop sign on Martin Street at its intersection with Curve Street?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Oh, second, it, the heck, I mean, it's de facto, anyway.
Yeah, it's, you should stop there, anyway.
Yeah, I, I know, but if, I, you know, but if they feel that mean.
Any further discussion?
I think because it's so wide, people tend to roll right, right through it, yeah.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gary?
I'm staying, I don't know enough about it to really.
And you wanna just wait, then?
No, no, I think.
You could, you could all take a look at it if you wanted to.
Report your judgment, right, just don't, I don't even know where it is, I mean, let alone, yeah.
Yeah, I, it's just that if, it's a T intersection, they're supposed to.
Where does the other end of Martin go?
Stop in, and the T-SAC thinks it's dangerous.
They think it doesn't go.
Requesting.
Is it a dead end?
To mind people.
We're going to Chelmsford.
That's what I'm seeing.
I'm not sure. It continues into Chelmsford or not.
All right, so, I guess we've already taken the vote, right?
It's okay, doesn't have to, not everything has to be unanimous.
Well, I was just gonna say, maybe we could just go drive it, but I, I'm, I'm comfortable with it being, I, I know where the street is, and it, it is a T intersection. It's a very wide intersection.
Yeah.
So, it's just putting it.
Yeah.
It's just making it obvious you should stop.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, stop people, but at least there'll be a stop sign there, yeah.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay. Very good, then, item number five, uh, the proposed date and time of the Christmas tree lighting is Tuesday, December fourth, at six P M. On the common, and the new owner of Fern's, Matt Hurwick, uh, involved in that, Abby Zimmerman is organizing volunteers. It's, it's, for the first time in a lot of years, Larry and Robin are not involved in being the prime organizers, so everyone's kind of putting it together, how it, how much had to go into making this thing happen, so. And, uh, of course, Gary Davis and, uh, DPW will be involved in stringing the lights, and, uh, yeah, it happens to be a Tuesday that the board does, is not meeting, so.
It's usually well-planned.
Yeah. It's, it's a week that the board is meeting. And I think that's, uh, that's all I've got in my report, uh, tonight.
Okay, um, would you, uh, would you, um, just chat with Gary about his thoughts about Brook Street?
Oh, right, from earlier, yeah.
No, I drive that every single day, and it's not that much.
She, she lives at the other.
I know, it's, it's a, it's a narrow street.
It is, it's a very narrow.
Along with.
I'll ask him, yeah.
Like, you know.
Or sound like they, they had planned to kind of do a finish coat, didn't, I don't know if that's the case, but, yeah.
The street's in good shape, actually.
We're not, we're not saying do something, just wanted to.
Yeah, I'll ask him.
Yeah.
About that.
Couple of trees. And they're right, there is brush all over the place.
Yeah.
And, um, are we, um, doing anything with the resignation?
Is that, uh?
Jim Marchant?
Oh, oh. Uh, well, I guess the, the board should accept that, the assessors, I think, have identified a, a candidate that they'd like to bring forward at their next meeting, of course, the assessors will be in on the, the twenty-seventh, because we have the tax hearing. So, they're hoping to have a candidate by the next time you meet. Of course, Jim's been on the board for many years, he's chairman for many years, so he's gonna be a big loss, so.
Oh, huge.
Big loss there, you know, that was his business, too, you know, appraisals and.
Twenty years on the Board of Assessors.
Yeah. Yeah, a long time.
Enjoy them.
Is it in fact true that he has to resign his position?
Oh, i- i- it's not, uh, because he's moving?
Yeah.
To another town, no, it's not, uh.
Well, that's because.
You don't have to, yeah, you, you don't have to live in town to be on a committee. Being elected.
It says that he will have to resign his, because he's no longer living, I'm just saying.
Oh, wait a minute, uh.
It's actually not true.
Are they elected?
Yes, he's elected.
If they're elected, that is true.
Yeah, okay.
Appointed is not true, but.
Yeah, well, I think it also depends upon the, the committee, some say that they have to be resident, some don't.
But there's not a bylaw that says you need to be a resident, so.
Unless the committee says, unless you, unless the, some committees do say, and that's why committees we've created since then, I've always tried to make sure it says that they don't.
That isn't elected, yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, he was just re-elected this year.
Anyone wanna make a motion?
And send them a letter?
Oh, I, I move that we accept with extreme gratitude, um, the resignation of Jim Marchant.
With extreme res, uh, gratitude for the work he's served, not for resigning.
Oh, yeah, right, right. For the, for the twenty years of his excellent service to the Board of Assessors.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye. It's unanimous.
All right, what do we got here? Liaison reports, is it? Next, anybody's got any?
I don't have any.
I have one.
Well, I've got a bunch of them.
Hit the highlights.
I will, I will be very, um, one thing is, though, um, I just talked to the librarian, um, she had a new budget item on, um, that she presented to the FinCom, and I discussed that with her. And so, that will be something that will, I, I gave her some direct, some, I didn't give her direction, I gave him, gave her some suggestions, and I think she will be coming to us, uh, to see.
First.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, um, and then I just wanna report that, uh, we had a very, I think, very productive meeting with the school committee, long-term caps, and, um, uh, facilities, municipal facilities, um, talked about possibly sharing physician. I think that's totally out the window at this point, um, unless we totally change the whole structure of, of everything the way we do, so I don't think that's gonna happen anytime soon, so, um, and then I gave you those two letters that, also, so that I will report back the other direction.
Okay, great, thank you.
Just on the Master Planning Steering Committee, um, the, they have, um, solicited people to volunteer for the Master Planning Advisory Committee, which, uh, all along has been thought to be maybe twenty, twenty-five, maybe thirty people, while it's gonna be forty-plus.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
The thinking being that they really don't want to eliminate anybody that's shown an interest in being on the advisory committee. So, it will be a large, difficult to manage well group, um, but, um,[1753.65] So it will be a large, difficult to manage well group, but the group won't start meeting except for preliminary orientation meeting this year, late this year, but they'll start meeting after the consultants onboard, potentially next May or June or something like that, and then maybe only meet every six weeks or eight weeks, and be a sounding board so that with, if recommendations or ideas are presented, they can say, you know, we think this is good or bad or indifferent, and they can also then in turn communicate to the people that they deal with about why the planning is moving in the direction it's moving. So it's both input back to the Steering Committee and the consultants, and direction for them, and proliferation of ideas back to the town.
Okay, thank you. I have one follow-up thing. I was wondering if they're willing to, or if, Tim, if you could work out a way that we could have us sit down with the Personnel Board, just to kind of work through that goal that we have.
Okay.
Just to make sure that we're each understanding our individual role, our board's roles.
The other thing I think we need to encourage them to really work intensively during this period up till December, or up until we, you know, because last year there was, there were these big gaps. You know, once the budget is closed, then they can, you know, kind of take it more easy, but we really do need them to...
I think FinCom told them to finish their business by the end of December, if it had an impact on the budget next year. And they've been able to, actually, they're having much better luck with four members. They've got a little flexibility now, so they've been able to book three meetings between now and the end of December.
We need to remember that they, you know, I think what we need to work out with them is, they don't approve the position, they just approve the appropriateness of the job description.
Right.
Yeah, but if they don't even do that, we can't get, we can't get a first base.
Yes, except we probably want to approve or not approve the job description before they even consider the, I mean, the role before they even consider the job description. It does, because it's just a waste of their time, if we're not gonna fund it.
You're right.
And so that's what I'd like to work through with them as soon as we possibly can, just to make sure that we're all in agreement on that process.
All right.
And I also just want to report that Tim's contract is finalized, as we had discussed. Kate took a read through it, just to make sure that I'd gotten everything from our meeting. I haven't signed it yet, because we finalized it when I was in California, but if you have a printout, I can sign it.
I think we do.
Signed interest.
Originals, yeah.
No, I just have one question.
Good.
I think, no, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I think it wasn't part of the initial run-through.
Yeah, okay. Well, it might be in the town bylaw. This whole thing is subject to that town bylaw, so...
Yeah. I think it's gone long enough.
No, I wasn't...
Okay, any other liaisons?
No, we're at the approval minutes.
Move to approval minutes.
I actually have a bunch of typos, but, you know, that kind of thing. But there, I do have one substantive change on the second page under the update of the Fuel Tank Project. In the first, in the second paragraph where it talks, the last sentence says, "The underground fuel tanks are no longer allowed in the current location," that's not correct. So I would like to change that to the, "Underground fuel tanks are, must be replaced by December 31st because of new state standards." Maybe, in fact, instead of replaced, let's say must be removed, because they don't have to be replaced. And then down, in the, the next two paragraphs down, Kate Reed stated that where that starts that, the last sentence should read, "Some items..." Somebody jump, there we go.
There we go.
Have been taken off the current list of fire department projects for this fiscal year, so then they may, there may be additional funds available to cover the cost for the closure of the underground tanks. Because it said the DPW has been...
Yeah, and so I think that that's, I just want to, not at all talking about your edit here, but I just want to be careful, like, with all of these projects as we move forward, that if we, if we're, obviously, there's a little bit of fungibility in the budget, and that's why we wrote it that way. But if there's something we know we have to do this year, we decide not to do it this year, but we know we have to do it next year, I don't think it's right to spend the money this year on something different, because then we're going to the town.
We're not, this is still fire department funds.
Yeah. Yeah, so as long as those projects that we're not gonna do aren't just, we're not just saying, oh, we're gonna do that next year, even though we presented it as a project for this year.
Well, actually, those projects have three years to be done in. That warrant says it's good for three years.
Okay, so it's out of the same bucket.
It's out of the same bucket.
Okay.
It's what I was saying was, what I was trying to say here was that this is not a cost overrun yet from the, or a budget overrun yet, because we haven't done all the projects, and there might be savings in another project, we haven't...
But in three years, you would be, you'll still be in the budget.
That we're certainly gonna be trying to still be in the budget in three years.
All right.
Yeah, I think that's one of the problems, is we all think of this year's projects, next year's projects, all of them are really... Last year, we asked for money for the next three years, for this list of projects. This year, we'll ask for money for the next three years for a whole new list of projects, because you can't do them in a year.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're not going to the town asking for funds for the same project over and over and over again, and not doing other things.
Yeah, no, no, we're not.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So move, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. It's unanimous. We'd just like to just, I realize the goal is always to be here at the meetings. On the 23rd, it was just painful to be remote. I just couldn't hear, and it was one of those ones where there were people, you know, standing up, and I could hear like every third word, so maybe there's something we can try to do to...
Yeah.
I certainly will try not to go on vacation anymore, but...
Besides, the place you go probably isn't there anymore, if you're going to California.
Yeah, especially if you wasn't there, you were on vacation.
You have to do something, because I don't know what your experience is when you're in Florida, but...
Actually, the Skype is pretty good.
Okay, maybe we kind of always try to use that. The phone, the phone was painful.
Well, it wasn't even a regular speaker phone, it was just a desktop phone.
By the time I tried it, it wasn't even that, it was, I think it was Tim's iPhone, and that, we talked about, you think you had it bad.
Come up with a better solution?
I gave up, I just, I hung up, I couldn't get anybody's attention.
So is there a motion to go into executive session?
I move that the board enter into executive session pursuant with MGL Chapter 30A, Paragraph 21A, Paragraph 3, to discuss strategy with respect to non-union bargaining with J.J. Supple. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the town's ability to bargain, and that afterwards, the board will not return to open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, brown eye.
Kissing her eye.
Read eye.
Louis eye.
Okay, so that ends our public portion of tonight's agenda, thank you very much.